Please stand. February 29, 2016, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners is now in session.
Good morning to all. Join me in prayer, would you please? Father, in the name of your son, Jesus, thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us to enjoy. Lord, we ask that you be with this board this morning as it goes about conducting the business of the great people of our county. Lord, as always, we ask that you remember the people who put their lives on the line daily for paramedics, EMS, first responders, our firemen, the assignment leaders, law enforcement, our military. These people serve to make us in this country free and make us free and our safety. Lord, be with these great people. Bless the great state of Florida and bless the United States of America with your precious name. Please now join me in bids to the...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to all. Welcome to the February 29 regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. I want to extend each of you a great big welcome. We've got a beautiful day out there and we have a good crowd this morning. That's what we want. We'd like to see this building filled up at our every meeting. Appreciate you taking time to come out. We truly do. As we begin, any of you have had a chance to look over the agenda or any of the consent agenda? As always, does anyone in the public have any questions or any concerns regarding the consent agenda? Anyone? While having none, it's normal. We'll turn to our staff. Does any of the staff members have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Having none, we'll turn now to the board. Does any board member have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Any board member? Having none, I will accept, I will introduce a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do you have a motion by Commissioner Barnes? Accept the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Quinn. Does any further, with the board, any further discussion? If not, if no opposition, motion passes four and oh. Mr. Butler? Mr. Mclemore, are you running late or you have any...
I think at best he'll be late.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. This time, we're going to make one little change to the agenda. Item number eight, because of, in the sake of time for some people, we're going to move item number eight up right behind item four, which is board business. So, we're going to shift number eight, and that's the only one, up in, right after number four. Just want to bring that to your attention. Mr. Butler, we'll start with you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My, I want to have a few items today in order of importance. First one is Beacon Hill Veterans Park. And I gave you a copy of a map.
Is this it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On that map, there's a, has a roughly highlighted, yellow highlighted area. And, and this is, this is to do with a conversation I had with Rodney Herring and Kenny Wood a couple of weeks ago. Rodney and Kenny are here today and they can speak to this also. The, the issue at hand is Beacon Hill Veterans Park, they're looking at, they would like to have an area dedicated by the county commission, roughly one half acre in size, that they can put future memorials and maybe shrubbery or vegetation in that area, like a garden. It could cause somewhat of a memory garden. And for the board's consideration, and Rodney can say it better than I can, and Kenny can say it better than I can, but they're looking for the board to recognize an area in, in the general areas highlighted on this map, that they can go in as, as they come up with different memorials for different branches of service that they can put there and know while they generate the money to do it, they have a place to set them up, to, to install them and erect them. But, and I think Rodney, if he would come up, he could, if Rodney wants to, if he wants to come up and explain what we're doing, but in, all it is, just recognizing an area about where the boardwalk is, about where the flagpole is, that can be used for a memory garden for the, for the veterans.
Rodney, if you'd like to come up, you're more than welcome. We're glad to have you. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning to you. Keep your name right over here.
I, beg your pardon?
Your name right over here.
Rodney Herring.
Just for the record.
I hadn't anticipated speaking, and I understood, I thought that Don was going to handle all of this. We were just here to witness, but I will say a word or two and try to keep it brief. How you doing? We, we have been trying, I guess, for about eight years since, since the Vietnam Wall, the wall that hills stood there, trying to get something permanent on that site that recognizes veterans in Gulf County, all over Gulf County, north, south, east and west, a permanent site. And Mr. Butler said there's about 39 acres there. And the proposal that we discussed with him takes up less than one half acre. So, a very minuscule part of the overall park. Without any disturbance for any playgrounds, restrooms, picnic tables, or anything else, paths for walking or walking dogs, we don't want to interfere with, with that at all. And the notion that some people in the community have had that, that we do or that we want to take over the park is totally bogus, completely. We want it to be a place where children and others can go out, tourists or locals, and enjoy, enjoy themselves, enjoy the amenities, but also a place where they can show respect. And in closing, like I said, I'm not prepared for this, but in closing, I was thinking about coming over here this morning when I was a child, growing up in Port St. Joe, and we had no parks. We had no baseball fields, no softball fields. And as I rode up 10th Street today, I see fields on either side of me, and I remember when they started Little League in Port St. Joe. And we first had tryouts on the baseball field, which was the old city field by the Centennial Building. And, but there were no facilities. And within a little bit of time, we had four fields in Port St. Joe, Little League fields. And I think about the generation that built those. Our fathers, the guys that came back from World War II and, and really built this little fishing village up into a nice little town. And that's one of the things that they did, was they built these parks from the city commission, from the county, and with their own shovels and hands and sweat, they got out and provided those fields for their children. And, you know, I'm 69 years old and played on the first Little League fields in Port St. Joe. And I realize now that when I was growing up, there wasn't even a gym. They played basketball in the Centennial Building. But that generation did it not for themselves, but...
I'll hold just a moment.
But for the future. And that's all.
All right.
All right?
Thank you. And you know, and as everyone knows, Gulf County is very pro-veteran. We have two, Highway 71 from here up all the way to the Calhoun County line, Highway 22 there, and Weble Heathcote from the intersection, I think it goes all the way to Tyndale Parkway. This is a very, we're very pro with our veterans and we appreciate them and...
It's not for us, but for the future.
And, and those that don't know, we have a fine veterans officer here, Mr. Paul, really goes beyond his duties to help the veterans. You know of any veterans that need assistance in any way, contact us or call the administration office out here and they'll hook Mr. Paul and we'll help them. Thank you, Rodney. Mr. Butler, back over here to you.
If we could get a motion and a vote on this to recognize that, that area, about a half acre area, it'd be great.
Chairman?
Yes?
I, I just want to make sure that we're clear with the area. I know this is an aerial with a highlighted area indicated, but I think that we need to talk about it a little bit in details about the, the actual location so that we're all clear on what the area is. Because as you know, we have the NERDA project going on and I, and we'll get an update on that later. And it's probably... We will get an update later in this meeting from the DEP regarding the NERDA projects. But up by the flagpole, we have the amphitheater going in and the DEP has graciously agreed to construct the amphitheater as a memorial to the veterans, which is the, the architect that has designed the conceptual design. It, it's very beautiful. It's not, I don't think it's final yet. It's a conceptual design and it's still being worked through, but it's going to be a very nice memorial to the veterans. And that's a hardscape. It's something that's permanent, that will be long lasting, that will make a, a large impact, and that will be something that the veterans can be proud of. So, when I'm looking at this yellow block here, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. And I have discussed this issue with Mr. Dan McDonough, who is the commander at the VFW. And he had said, and maybe, maybe Mr. Herring can clarify if he agrees with this or not, but he had said that it was the walkway. We have the wood walkway that's actually an ADA walkway so that you can get up to the park. From the walkway forward, the portion of the park where the, the hill is and the area between the park and the road, that was the area that, that they would like to have and to have something of visual impact so people can be there and enjoy it, but also see it from the road and have a, a visual impact there. My, my only concern is this is going over the amphitheater and this is kind of event space as well. The higher part where you have the view of the water, that's where all the events are held, and that's the only area there where, where the event space is that I would be concerned about. I think the area from the hill forward would be a wonderful area for this type of, of action from the VFW, the American Legion, from the veterans to place these monuments or whatever you would like to place. I think you want a little bit of flexibility as you go forward. And I know we've talked a little bit about the brick pavers with a fundraiser where people can purchase brick pavers. So, I think we just need to clarify by that because this drawing I'm looking at goes over the amphitheater and over the kind of event space, and maybe Jennifer may want to factor in on that as well.
Mr. Butler, correct me if I'm wrong. This is just a general area, is that correct?
Yes.
We're, Herring and them, we'll get it narrowed on down where we want. That's all. That's primarily this shaded area, just the general area, in which I feel like that's where it should be, somewhere in that area, appropriate to everything else, compatible.
So, I, I would make the motion that we move forward with, and I, and correct me if I'm, if I'm not on board here, but that we set aside an area that the veterans can use, that we won't be putting anything else in that area for these purposes. And it's the, the walkway and forward, and we can make that more clear going forward if, if you'd like to make it a more, a more clearly designated area. But I, I'm not comfortable approving this because I think it's too vague. But I think that, I will make that motion that we, as a board, approve an area in that general vicinity for the veterans to use. And really, nothing that we're planning conflicts with that. None of the NERDA projects, nothing that we're planning in that park conflicts with that area that's on there.
That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have a second to...
A second, I got a question.
Second over here by Commissioner Quinn. Question, question, sir. You have a floor.
All right, so that, that, this part that's highlighted, where, where is the hill located from this part that's highlighted?
Well, it's actually, if you, it's forward of that, towards the water. You see the walkway that's kind of more straight?
Right.
That's the wood walkway that takes you from the top down to the bottom, where the land goes down. This walkway that you see in the yellow, that's the concrete walkway that, and see, that's all event space there when people have weddings or reunions. That, this is where they have it. And this is, Mr. Quinn, that larger area over there just next to the amphitheater, that's kind of that viewing area that's a wood deck that you can look out over the, over the water. Jennifer, have you seen that?
No.
Okay.
I just think we need to be real clear as to where the area is.
If Rodney and Kenny thought that the sloped area of the park would suffice what they need, or the area that would encompass the, the platform and the boardwalk, half acre in that area and not up on the flat ground, then that might be a little more detail.
I know that's what, I think...
Oh, no question. He, he what? Wait just, just a minute. I think if we go back in the board of business to Commissioner Quinn, you were responding him, Commissioner, have any...
I'm done.
...question, right? Thank you, sir.
And Dan McDonough, who again is the commander, that, that is what he had clearly stated in meetings that I had with him regarding this issue. So, I think it's just something that we need to clarify. They, they want to go forward with the amphitheater being the, being a memorial, and it would have, just to kind of expand on that, it would have each branch of the service, their insignia or emblem displayed on the amphitheater. It's, it's going to be very nice. And Ms. McDonough had said that, that area forward where you can see how it, the land goes up and there's really nothing forward, and it would be visual from the street, that people could actually see whatever it was that they put in, any type of memorial, that you could see it from the street. So, I just think we need to clarify, we definitely want to represent the majority of veterans.
All right. This, just a moment, gentlemen. As we stated beginning, recognize that the veterans want to do something there and it's our place and, and support them there. And I think with this area here, we can find, as I stated prior, we want something that's will be compatible to the projects that's going in, and I think that's what the veterans want. But anyway, and let me recognize, sir, if you want to come up or, and come to the mic and give this young lady right here your name.
Yes, sir. I'm Thomas, Thomas M. Bush. I'm a veteran and I...
There you go.
Appreciate the veterans, one of the...
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
But who has, who's seen plans for, I mean, I haven't, I've been asking people for plans or pictures of anything and everything that's going to go on at this park. I love this park and I love the, the flagpole and I try to help them sometimes there when I maintain it, pull the weeds or whatever, but when are we going, when's the public going to see pictures?
Mr. Bush, let me think. Hopefully, I can ask you a question.
Yes.
It is in the planning stages. It hasn't all been finalized?
Yes, sir.
It's very close. And when it does, then it will be presented to the public for their input or anything.
Chairman, if, if I may?
Yeah.
We did, the DEP did have a public meeting...
It did.
...in January to show the preliminary plans for the park. They, they were on display and, and they were there for questions. That was in January.
Do you have a copy of those?
We can, we certainly can provide you. I know that the county administrator has them, but, but we, they did have, hold a public meeting.
Thank you.
And of course, they're here today also to...
Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Give a brief moment.
I'm Kenny Wood. I'm with the American Legion. Our commander's out of, out of town, or she would have been here. The, just to try to clarify a couple of things. The area that we looked at to put in some memorial markers, the memorial markers would be more specific to all of the men that have given their lives for our country from Gulf County. I'm not sure that what the FDIP has in mind for the, the memorials go that far. I think they're more intent on, from what I've understood, recognizing the different branches of the service. We don't want to interfere with anything that's already been planned. The area we're looking at is not used currently. It's a grassy area south of the concrete walkway. The concrete walkway goes east and west and it's, I haven't measured it, but I would guess it would be 20 or 30 yards of flat area, then, then it starts sloping down. We're not interested in obscuring any view. We don't want to put anything on the slopes. I don't think that would be conducive to people being able to see these memorial plaques. I'm not, we're, we're in the conceptual stage. I think it would be maybe a good thing once we, if the county commissioners agree, we need to be able to go forward getting donations and raising funds to fund this, but we don't want to do that unless we're, have a place to put them. But we could come up with a, a design. It may be, it may be a, a plot plan, or we may even have a model made showing exactly what it is, where it is for the county to approve or make recommendations for changes. We're not looking to put anything in that's going to detract from anything that FDIP's doing or any future plans for the park. It's still a county park. We're not asking for any ownership of any land, just to set aside so that once we can obtain funds to start putting the monuments in, then we'll, we'll, we'll be able to go forward. Any other questions? I hope that clarifies what, what our thoughts are. It's still conceptual. Nothing's been etched in stone, so...
Mr. Wood, I think Mr. Herring made it very clear. It's in an infancy stage...
Yes.
...right now. And when we get ready to go there, I'll assure you, they'll, they'll be, and they won't, like I say, we've got 39 acres, you won't be on the 39th acre back over there. If you want to start with one here, you'll be up front there because people love to go by and look at these and read everywhere. I see people right out here in front here, go up to Weble Heathcote, the old courthouse, people going out, they stop and they look at those plaques. So...
For anybody that would like...
I'm on board with you and I feel like...
Anybody that would like to look at any of these kind of things, you can go online. Abbeyville, Alabama has a bunch of them or has some. Milton, Florida has some. They have some good pictures of ours. Our concept is going to be a lot smaller because of the limited space, but yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Based on, on what we've heard from Mr. Wood, I'd like to withdraw my motion. I, I think it is premature and what I would suggest is that we, Mr. Butler, myself and Ms. Jenkins, that we work with the American Legion and the VFW to better define the space that, that they desire and the design that, that they're looking for so that we can come back here with something more definitive for the board to approve. So, I will withdraw that motion.
Thank you. And Adam Clark showing that...
Pull, pull my second.
Well, in his second. All right, Mr....
Thank you, Mr....
Thank you. Now, Mr. Butler, let's go back over here with you.
On Veterans, on Veterans Park, if we can have something ready for the next county commission meeting to show the, the location of where this half acre is going to be.
Okay.
That'd be the plan.
Good deal. All right, sir. Next?
Next item, talking with the city of Port St. Joe, looking at possibly a joint meeting with the city of Port St. Joe the week of the 14th or the week of the 21st. If those two weeks work out with the county commission, Jim will put it in front of his board tomorrow night at the city commission. Jim Anderson will. So, joint meeting to talk about several things.
Do you want it like a workshop meeting?
Like a workshop, a joint meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about economic development, we'll talk about sewer and anything else that may want to put on the agenda. But if those two weeks okay with the board, I coordinate with the city and we'll, we'll tie a date down.
All right.
Next item, on the night, March the night from 1:00 to 5:00 Central Time, have a meet and greet for the new extension director. He, he came in and said hello at the last board meeting, but have a meet and greet from 1:00 to 5:00 Central Time at the extension service office in Weble. So, it'd be great if anybody could make that meeting. And the last item I put in front of you, this is a, this will be a change order to the tower construction company bid. We had tower construction put in three antennas and three sets of cable, cables on the tower here in Port St. Joe. They came up to do the work and they were, they didn't want to climb a tower, refused to climb a tower because it was somewhat shaky. So, we had a wind load analysis done on the tower. We got that back about a week ago. Friday, I got a price, I got a couple of prices Friday, but I got a price from the contractor that's putting the antennas and the cabling up. And the third page over, this one, this one that I've highlighted on the front, but third page over, they will, they'll go in and tension the guy wires and replace the hooks and for, you see down about halfway down, $5,875.20. If they have to replace the turnbuckles, it'll be another $1,342.77. And with my conversation I had Friday to do with this project, it's been a long, strong out project, but in order to get people from Core Gables back up here to finish what they started, we let them tension the guy wires, then they go up and mount the antennas and the cabling, and then we'll be a lot better off. We're done with the grounding, that's already behind us. And, and I call it a change order. It really has nothing to do with the project that they did. They bid on a project, put the antennas and cables up, but in order for them to climb a tower, these wires need to be tensioned. And since they already have a contract on that tower, I think Mrs. Clerk will want to call us, call it a change order. But we, we, it's, we're same company on the same tower, going on at the same time. But two different things. But my recommendation to the board is let us deal with this company, let us, they will be here in a week to finish it up. It'll take about two and a half days to do what they got to do. $5,875.20. And if the turnbuckles are not usable that's on the tower today, it'll be another $1,342.77. That's my recommendation to the board.
Okay, board members, or Mr. Butler on this tower. It has been a long, we've got to understand, we've got all the grounding system and antennas are pretty much, they will be put in place after this, this tension, and we should be good to go if we can find somebody, Harry, you can climb it and paint it. What do you say? Okay. All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the recommendation of the administrator here on this tower project.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner... A second by Commissioner Barnes. We have a board discussion on this tower project. Do you want any audience, any concerns or any questions on the tower project?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can ask the commission just to include in the motion your purchasing, your... your purchasing, your procurement policy, provide for the ability for the board to make this exception to the purchase in the change order the administrator just spoke of. It's Section 4, Subsection 9, exceptional purchases with the availability of the vendor, the familiarity with the site, they're on site already in the existing goods and services and the cost savings to the county. So if I can ask you all to include that in your motion to use the exception under your procurement and purchasing policy as well.
Please include what Mr. Attorney just said in my motion, please.
You got it over here? All right. All right, is there any opposition? I've been to, any opposition, not motion, passes 4-0 seed with the tower project. Hopefully, we'll be through with this. We've been working on it quite a while, don't we?
We have.
Quite a while.
It'll be good, it's all right better. And we get a couple more repeaters in place.
There you go.
As time goes on.
Help the sheriff and help EMS, fire, it'll help everyone.
Yeah, we have a fire department willing to pay money out and pay for a repeater and we're going to be in a lot better shape than we were a year ago.
Good deal. All right, you still have the floor, sir.
That's chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Summer?
Nothing right now.
Not at this time. Mr. Paul?
No, sir.
Offering, sure, come on up, please, sir.
Morning. The first thing going handle, I need a, I need a motion to approve two of them to make disagreements I've been working on with attorney review. One of them is the school board had asked for. It's a turnaround up in the Dal Keith area for a school bus. We've been maintaining it in the past, but we don't have any paperwork, so this would, this would be for that. The other one is for a ditch maintenance in Jones Homestead where a covert pipe has collapsed and is blocking water from one of our ditches from getting to a larger ditch and getting out. Talked to the homeowner, spoke with Don about, so this is just paperwork to clear up that so we can get these two projects knocked out.
Mr. Attorneys, have you reviewed this?
I've spoken to Mr. Cothran about that and he's also going to provide me the final draft just to review once more before it's asked for your signature.
All right, board members. You what? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have a motion by Commissioner Barnes. I hear a second for this, second, a second by Commissioner Quinn. Any other, any further board discussion? Anyone, any audience? Any opposition? Motion passed 4-0.
And the only other thing I have is I need to request permission for approval and for the chairman to sign three budget amendments for mosquito control. It's paperwork.
Mosquito?
Yes, sir.
I need a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barnes. Any further board discussion? Anyone, any audience? Anyone, any audience? No opposition? This motion passed 4-0.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Cothran a question while he's here?
Sure, sure.
I just wanted to touch base with you on the Deseret agreement for the Gulf Air ditch. Where are we on that?
I called him last week in preparation to the meeting to ask him if they had a chance to review it or sign it, and he said they were still working on it.
Okay, so it's all in, on their side. Now, we're completely finished with our part of it.
I gave them everything that I know of that we may.
All right, well, thank you for following up with that.
Nothing, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have something here. Mr. Danford is fixed due in a few weeks, retire county. He is presently, he's our director of solid waste and I, on behalf of this board, not from me, but from this board, Joe, we thank you for the service that you've rendered to this county and to the people. We thank you for your dedication that you've given here. We're going to miss you. I will. I've went to you a lot of times and you always shot straight with me. You gave me the answer I needed, not what I wanted, but you gave me what I, what was the right way to go. But anyway, on behalf of the board, we want you to enjoy your retirement.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Glad to know.
Thank you, sir.
Going Canada fishing.
Good. I can't even go to Apalachicola River fishing, so you're going all the way to Canada. Well, that's great. Again, thank you for your service. All right, let's drift over here on this side. Mr. Sherry?
Yes, sir.
There's you. Houston, Mr. Whitfield, Ms. Jenkins?
No, sir.
Huh. What about you, Miss Linnier? Surely, I got to get something over here, Rhonda. Madam Clerk? Well, there we go, come on.
I understand my mic is not working, so it appears you can hear me. I just want to tell the board, thank you for the ceiling tile replacement and the lighting repair in the clerk's office vault. It was damaged, you know, a good while back and I know it's been a, a project that probably maintenance wasn't looking forward to because of all of our records in there. It's a little hard to work around. Excuse me. But I want to thank Steve Mark and his staff. They did an excellent job. I mean, it looks so good. If you haven't been in there, come by and see it, it looks wonderful. They did, they really took extra care in protecting our records and not damaging them because you can't move them around very much. Excuse me, I've had the flu, so it's a little hard to talk. And Mr. Nunnery and his work crew, they did an excellent job as well. I mean, just keeping the dust and debris minimized, they did an amazing job and I just want to publicly acknowledge them and the work that they did. We have a really good crew in our maintenance department and thank Mark as well for getting that on the calendar for us as well, so thank you.
Mr. Norris, you must have read my mind because that was the same words I was fixing, was going to present here very shortly. While we're on that, let me say again, this county has wonderful people at work. We have dedicated people. Just this last week and out with the Florida Department of Health, there's a big transition fixing to take place and they, we have representatives here from the Florida Department of Health in Gulf County, they will come up briefly, very shortly, and go into some in-depth details. But we got a, last year, a twister came through. We were hitching, laid a big oak tree across our ambulance building, damaged an ambulance. It went up there, you can't even tell anything's been there. Houston, they should be through your awning this week. They set the post Friday for you. And out on the beach, the things they're doing here, but I want to say thank you to these people too. They do, they're very professional people. They do great work. They do great work and they don't get the recognition a lot of times that they need. But we need to every now and then stop and thank our, our workers, the ones that provide a good service for us and do, they do first-class work. I hope they never leave and go into house building business because if I was in a house building, needing a house, I think I'd contact them. But anyway, thank you, yes.
Chairman, while we're on this subject, I think that we need to look at the possibility of constructing a handicap ramp in the front of the courthouse building so that our handicap folks can, can enter the building without having to go around to the back. I think it's worth looking at what the cost would be for our, our guys to construct such a ramp and if, if it's okay with you, I know this is a little bit out of order, but since Ms. Becky was up, it kind of prompted that, that topic. But I would like to make a motion that we ask our maintenance folks to look at constructing a, an ADA ramp so that the handicap folks can access the courthouse from the front door and, and at least report back to us on what the cost would be for that.
Mr. I'm in agreement with you here for, it's been mentioned to me and we've looked at it. We went out and physically seen how it can work and with our engineering firm, it has been on the table. Now, we hadn't taken any immediate action here in the last few months, but it is, it's in the works. It's, it's on the books to do that because I've sat there a lot of times with these officers, watched the people come and go. Amazing how many people come in and they either go into the clerk's office, they go into the tax collector's office. A lot of people, a lot of elderly people and the other way, they have to come around the back of the building. So yes, Mr. Butler and I have discussed this along with engineering and I'm glad you brought it up and we'll see if we can't get something.
Well, it's a long way for the handicap folks and it's also, it's difficult on the deputies in, in the.
They assist a lot of people.
It's distracting for the deputies to have to attend to people at the back door. So I at least would like, again, I'll make that motion that maintenance looks at it and comes back with a plan and a cost so that we know what we're dealing with.
All right.
I second that.
Good second. Got a motion by Commissioner Barnes, second by Commissioner Barnes. We have a board discussion on this. I think it's been long needed. Anyone, any audience? Handicap round. All right, if not, no opposition, the motion passed 4-0 to look into that. All right, let's see, Ms. Roberts, I think we're over here with you. There you go. Sheriff?
No, sir, I'm good.
Anything before us this morning? Good, thank you, Sheriff, thank you so much. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we move into board business. Paul Duff wants to lead off. Commissioner Brian, Commissioner Quinn, it doesn't matter to me, I'm very liberal. Okay, all right, we recognize. Commissioner Brian.
Yes, I would like to ask our county attorney, Mr. Novak, for an update on 7724 Alabama, the burned-out trailer.
Mr. Novak?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, following up on our last meeting, when I reported to you all, I spoke with Justin Ritchie. He's an associate attorney with the law firm dealing with that property on behalf of the bank. The, as, as you all recalled, just to give you some history, on October 20th, the les pendens was filed on that property, which involves obviously the notice of foreclosure and ties it up through the courts after we had already had a, an order from our special master for clean and lean. Following up on that, December 2nd, we had contacted the bank who then advised us to speak with their attorneys. Since that time, we've spoken with them and reached out to them on the 4th, the 7th, the 8th of December. We were advised on December 8th that they would be working with their asset protection group to clean the property. After the holidays, we began to reach out to them again to find out what the status was. We've reached out to them on January 11th, the 25th, once again writing to us and letting us know through correspondence that they are in the process of trying to private the property cleaned. And I reported to you all at your last county commission meeting, the latest I had heard from Mr. Ritchie was that they were continuing to try to arrange to schedule that. Since that last meeting, I've reached out to them on four separate occasions, both in calls and in correspondence, on the 3rd, the 11th, the 15th, and most recently on the 24th last week, to find out the status of when we can expect this property to be cleaned. The most recent response, Commissioner, that I received was last Friday, and it reads as follows, "Good morning, Mr. Novak, I've followed up with my client this morning in an attempt to provide you with an update. I've stressed the importance of keeping you on the loop in order to prevent the property from being demolished. I'll allow you to know once I have an update. Regards, Justin Ritchie." And that was from last Friday. That's the last I've heard in our follow-ups in the four times since that time. So we'll continue to press. If the commission has a different direction they want to take on that property right now, we're certainly welcome to do that. Just need that further direction from you all.
Well, I certainly would prefer that they did it and rather than we do it and, and lean the property. It's always better to not have to go back and recoup the money. I guess, this has been going a long time, certainly, but it can be quite expensive. So unless the board has any other ideas, I think that we should put the, just put the pressure, continue to put the pressure. I appreciate that you've been reaching out to them regularly and continue to put the pressure on them to clear the space. If they don't, then I think that we will have to take action and, and property.
Will do.
My next item, Mr. Chairman, is regarding our garbage pickup and Waste Pro. I have had continued complaints regarding the Waste Pro service. We've got late or missed pickups. Streets will be missed or sections of streets. They're not emptying out the cans. The trash and broken glass are left on the street. We have had leaking trucks. I will say that Mr. Rick Payne is just wonderfully responsive and when I call him, he always returns the call. He always follows up. He follows up with the customer. He has done a great job really following up. But the reactive nature of this service is, is not really working and, and I can understand some of that in the beginning when you start a new route and you might miss some streets. But this has been going on for quite a while and I, I would like to see that service stepped up, the quality of that service, in a proactive way. But it's, it's these weekly calls that kind of keep this issue on my radar screen. But the, the bigger consideration is the overall relationship. And other counties nearby have much better deals than we have with Waste Pro. And as an example, and I've mentioned Waculla before, but as an example, Waculla County, they have their weekly garbage pickup, but they also have recycling pickup, curb side pickup of recycling. They have white goods pickup. That's stoves, refrigerators, washers, dryers. You can put those out and they will pick it up. And they have, where you can have a quarterly call to have furniture picked up, large items, bicycles, grills, items of that nature that wouldn't fit in a can. Waculla pays $196 a year. All residents pay that. It's, it's the same across the board. Of course, there is a, an exception for very low income, but other than that, everybody pays $196 a year. Now, of course, as we all know in Gulf County here, we do have our weekly garbage pickup. We have no recycling pickup. You cannot put your white goods out. No refrigerators, washers, dryers, stoves, no furniture, no bulk items. You're really not supposed to put anything out that's not in that can. And we pay $51.75 a quarter, which is $270 a year. So they, it's roughly the same amount, but they pay a little less and they get a tremendous more service than, than we are receiving here. Now, I, I can't get my head around that and that that's the deal that we negotiated for the people of Gulf County. And Waste Pro's been in material breach or, or default to their contract for over a year. And I've brought it up many times and I've asked for an analysis and what can be done. Our, I was presented with a five-line analysis. I, I have it here. We've seen it, I've shown it at prior meetings. This was the analysis that I was provided by Mr. Hammond, our assistant county administrator. And following that, we asked for another analysis on December 8th, the December 8th meeting. Haven't received anything back on that. It's been clear to me, Mr. Chairman, that you have not wanted to discuss the issues with Waste Pro. And when, when you're in a contract and.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Whoa, let me correct you.
I'm going to finish and then you can, you can say whatever you want.
You say that I did? No.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm clawing your hand right now.
Can you please let me finish?
Hold up just a minute. I have to say, repeat that again, that I have done what?
That you do not want to discuss the Waste Pro issue. And I.
That's absolutely not true.
I can bring clips of the meetings in if you'd like and we could show them on the overhead. I'd be happy to do that. As I was saying, you, you shut me down at every juncture when I try to discuss the issues with Waste Pro. And you're, you're in a contract with somebody who's been in breach, in default. Our attorney confirmed that and we don't call them in default. We could have many times gone back to the table and negotiated a better deal. This is a deal that was negotiated and was approved in a special meeting with about 24 hours' notice. Now, how this deal came about, I don't know. But we had a meaningful discussion about the Waste Pro contract and our attorney laid out much of what has gone on and, and the, and the status of the contract on October 27th. And I expressed my concerns. I have repeatedly expressed my concerns about this issue for two years. Two days after that meeting, there was another big party at what appears to be the successor to the Dal Keith Men's Night, which is the Howard Creek Men's Night, and it was sponsored by Waste Pro. Hundreds of men attending. I, I know that some of you commissioners were there, the administrative staff, maybe the attorney, that's, that's what I'm told. Hundreds of men. Hundreds of men, hundreds of men in attendance. And signs up and down Dockwood Field Road on the way to the property. And I just want to show folks so they know what the sign is. This is one sign. Joanna Bryant Appreciation Night. Now, clearly, this was a dinner, steak, whiskey, big party sponsored by Waste Pro. I was not invited, but it was in appreciation of me. I want to show one more. This is the other sign that was up. Now, these were up and down Dockwood Field Road, many of these. And it appears to me, thank you, Jerry, it appears to me that the hostility that I experienced in this room continues on through the evening into these parties. And it's an effort to show Waste Pro that the folks that are at these parties and Mr. Chairman, I believe you were at the party. My understanding is, and you all could correct me if I'm wrong, several of the commissioners were there. Mr. Butler, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Novak, embracing Waste Pro. Now, this is a contractor. You should be at arm's length. You should be representing the people of Gulf County. You should have their best interests. Now, Waukulla Commissioners, they negotiated this wonderful contract and the people of Waukulla, they get great service. They get a lot of service for less money. The people of Gulf County, we didn't get that deal, but you guys got, you know, big steak and whiskey dinners, which appears to be, I hope you got more than that. I don't know what you got, but I hope you got more than that. I know Commissioner, I'm sorry that Commissioner McLemore isn't here. He's been a huge proponent of Waste Pro. But it's disappointing to me that we can't come in here and do the business of Gulf County. You know, what does your wife think of this kind of stuff? What does this say to the young women of Gulf County? I just want to make sure that everybody understands that it may not be the customer's best interest that we're negotiating for when we're negotiating your solid waste contract and other contracts. This is just an example of how business is done.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
You respond first if you so.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryan, I respect your opinions, but they're totally false. They're totally false. They have no merit. They have no merit. Mr. Attorney?
Ms. Bryan, you mentioned me twice. You know that I was at some party you were referring to? You just said twice that I was at some party, so I was just curious.
I'll tell you, I wasn't there because it's only, it's a men-only party, several hundred men only. But men have told me that Mr. Barnes was there, that Mr. McLemore was there, that Mr. McDaniel was there, and that the administrator
But you also mentioned me twice.
And the assistant administrator and the attorney. That's what I was told.
Your information's false because if you're referring to the fellowship gathering at Dalkey's, I wasn't at that gathering, but
Fellowship?
I've been going for 10 years over the years and I've been invited up to Ms. Norton's farm for that gathering. The one you're referring to, I was not at, so your information's false. You just mentioned twice I was there. But I was not, Ms. Bryan, so I just want that clear for the record.
I appreciate that you've cleared that up. And I said at the beginning, anybody who was not there, you can state. This is what I'm told. I made it clear, I wasn't there. I did see the signs. I was there. I was on the street and saw the signs, but I was not at the party. And I would welcome anyone who wasn't there to state that they were not there.
Mr. Chairman, if I can also, with regards to the contract issues, I'll be happy to discuss those when you guys get a chance to.
And you've already gone through, on October 27th, you've gone through where we are. It's not a legal issue, Mr. Novak. It's an issue from this board. It's an issue of what this board wants to do, what action it wants to take.
Ms. Bryan, you brought up two issues. One is with regards to mandatory trash issue, which you held up a piece of paper. You asked the staff to give you comments on it. That is an issue about mandatory trash pickup. The other issue is the contract that the county has with the community and Waste Pro. They're two separate and distinct issues. So if you want to discuss the contract, I'd be happy to comment on that. I've given you all chronology on that. I've given you status updates on it. But they're two separate issues. Mandatory trash, which is an issue you've all discussed in the past, which I believe you're referring to there, and you're referring to Waukulla County and the deal that they had struck. And then you're talking about the contract that Gulf County has, which is the only vendor and bidder the county received after a five-month vetting process that was a joint effort between the city of Weewahichka, the city of Port St. Joe, and county officials that came back. And then you also mentioned renegotiating the contract. The county has renegotiated the contract with Waste Pro and it's been amended. And that's how you now have liquidated damages. You also have amendments to the no longer roadside pickup and the price schedule that the county has. So it has been renegotiated with your authorization and it has been memorialized through an amendment to the contract over the last year.
Well, and I would like to answer that, Mr. Chairman. The liquidated damages provision, you talked about this last time, that we are collecting liquidated damages. It's a small amount compared to where we are. And again, this is an attack on Waste Pro. Waste Pro is doing business in the environment that we have created. This is about the people who are in control in this county. It's not about Waste Pro. Now, I do have issues with the service that we're being provided. And we didn't have these issues with waste management, the quality of the service, the things that I mentioned at the beginning. Now, when we put this up for bid, waste management bid, but they bid realistically. We took the Waste Pro, this board in a special meeting took the Waste Pro bid, but they didn't perform by the terms of their bid. So for an example, if I tell you I can build you a house in 10 days and Commissioner Barnes bids against me and says that he can build it in 30 and you give it to me because I can build it in 10, but then it actually takes me 60 days to build it. Mr. Barnes was the one who really bid it correctly, that he could have built it in 30. I just said I would build it in 10, I built it in 60. This is the situation that we are in. So this contract was awarded to Waste Pro, but they did not perform. And Waste Management, who had been performing well, people were happy for the most part with their service, they bid realistically and so they lost. But you know, that's water under the bridge. What are we doing now? Why are you attending these events where you're putting out signs because I'm speaking up for the people against our problems with our garbage pickup? So you go out there and embrace them. You know, it's clearly an effort to humiliate and belittle me to the public.
Mr. Chairman?
Let me answer first.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bryan, I have no knowledge of these signs. I haven't seen these signs. And I don't know where you're going with all of this. And we could stay here the dark negotiating. We negotiated a good contract. We, this is not Waukulla County. Yes, former Commissioner Jaeger sitting back there tried a recycle project down on the Cape. Guess what? That time, I think it was Waste Management. They said it won't work. Go down there where the bottles were supposed to be. People, humans are something to deal with, full of household garbage. They just pulled it off. They said it won't work. We tried it. Am I correct, Mr. Jaeger? Thank you, sir. But as far as negotiating a contract, there were several parts to this contract. And the only one that bid on it, the three phases of it, right today, ladies and gentlemen, your garbage bill is locked in probably for another four years. It's an 11-year deal, spread over 11 years. Now, I'm out there at that site every week, Commissioner. I don't know if you've been there. I hope you have. I hope these other commissioners, but I'm at that site every week. I was there last Thursday. We were painting the handrails. We've had a lot of bad weather. We had some DEP issues, some permitting issues. But that's all, but all the same, as the attorney said, it hadn't cost you a dime. We made money. We've got 60 tons per month of free dumping out there. They're paying us, I don't know how many thousands of dollars they paid into here. It's not a bad contract. Don't be misled. Don't be misled on that. We tried household pickup, or limb pickup, phones lit up. But for the next four years, your garbage bill will remain the same. Then on the, for five years, on the sixth year, it will go up 2%. That's about on $51, maybe a dollar. And that's good for three years. And then it'll go up about another dollar. For the period of 11 years, your garbage bill will be from $51.75 per quarter to under $55. The other contractor that bid started off in the 60s. So this is not a bad contract. Yes, there were some bumps in the road out there. We had a lot of rain. Any of you that knows the geographical area of this, Mr. Herring, I know you do because you're a race here. It's low, it's wet. We had to build the ground level up. I don't know how, not we, the Waste Pro had to build the ground level up now. And when you go that, you gotta go, you got DEP involved because there's water issues there. But this hadn't been a song and dance here, what we've had to go through there. But you had, it hadn't cost you a penny out there, people.
There you go, the big defender, the big, you're defending Waste Pro.
I'm defending the facts.
I have worked in with construction, Mr. McDaniel. When you go out and look at a site and you bid on it, you bid based on the site and you should know whether you're going to have to bring in fill and what you're going to have to handle. We're in Florida, there is rain. You are making excuses. You're not, you're not really addressing the issue at hand.
Where are you going with this? Just tell me. I just gave them the fact on that, look at your bill. Look at your bill. You know, the fact.
And you're paying more than Waukulla and they're getting
This is not Waukulla.
Way more services. And you know, I asked for our staff to look at what I got from Mr. Hammond that told us that it was impossible for us to have mandatory garbage pickup. But we have to do some big study. Well, Waukulla didn't do the study. So the response is that they are a charter county, so they could do anything they want.
True.
According to their county attorney and their county commissioners, it had nothing to do with them being a charter county. They put the same, they were able to negotiate a very reasonable price and they gave the same price to everyone with the exception of the very low-income people. And that is why they didn't have to do a study. And it was so reasonable and it cuts down on all this stuff being dumped out in the woods, being dumped everywhere because you can just put it out. You can put everything out. So that's what my point is. Yet from the, for all of this time, you haven't even been able to be willing to even look at it. Because you have a contract, Waste Pro, I would venture to say, if this board said, you know, you haven't performed, you haven't built the transfer station on time, we want to sit back down at the table. They would sit down at the table. But you are so defensive of them, you don't even give them the opportunity to sit down at the table. And that's the question, why can't we go back and fix this contract? It's a long time for the people of this county not to be able to put their trash out, five years.
Mr. Butler, how many times have you sat down with Waste Pro? I know we have.
Probably a couple dozen.
Have a bit of it. Bit of it. Commissioner?
Have you ever heard of a most favored nations clause? Whatever you give your customer, I want as good a deal as the best deal you give. There's nothing wrong with asking for that. We could have had that.
Were you at the vote? Were you there?
No, you called a 24-hour special meeting, 24-hour notice special meeting and approved the contract. That's what you called. And you're telling me how you're out at the garbage dump, the Waste Pro station, you're here, you're there. Every time you bring this stuff up, it doesn't sound like it's about what's best for the people of Gulf County. It sounds like it's what Ward McDaniel is doing and where he is and how he's got his fingers and everything and how he's managing everything. But Commissioner McDaniel, it should be about what's best for the people. You don't have to be at the Waste Pro site to do what's best for the people.
But I was elected to that and see what's going on. That's what this job, that's part of being a county commissioner, to be there. Now, I've been there, I'm sure, I don't know, I'm sure, I don't know if these other commissioners aren't there, but I'm around, just like this last high wind came, I was down on that Cape, looking at those waves that was rolling in there and slashing over. I'm in a position where I can get around and I do that. I'm up at Five Points. I'm not trying to put anything. I want to know what's going in the county. I want to know what's going on. That's what I do, I try to stay. Now
Mr. Chairman?
I think we've had, here, we've had enough of this. Go ahead. I'll recognize you and that's it. And I'm going to ask the commissioner if you would move on to other items.
Yes, sir. The couple of things, just going back to the issues that were brought up. There was analogy to the barn and when it can be built. And I'm assuming the barn was in reference to the transfer station. It's over two years ago when the county in 2013 had to notice that they had the intent to go back out to bid. So it was a five-month process before May of 2014. In that process, there was a pre-bid conference where you had three vendors who came to the pre-bid conference, if I recall, in April or late March of 2014. At that pre-bid conference, it was reviewed that the county specs and requirements were that a transfer station would be built. The county would provide the land and that the vendors that were proposing bids would propose in their package a transfer station construction and new scale house. Of the three, two submitted. I believe Trash Man out of Panama City did not submit. The other two did submit, Waste Pro and Waste Management. Waste Pro submitted a proposal to the county with regards to a transfer station and a scale house. Waste Management did not. So with regards to the timing of one, one could build a barn or one could, takes longer than the other, only one vendor to the county in that whole process over the five months of working with both cities and the county did one vendor actually submit a proposal to build that at the time when the county said they're closing their landfill, stopping the reserves of $400-plus thousand a year and taking the county in that direction of either a six to an 11-year contract with a new hauler. The second issue brought up with regards to comparing it to other counties, and Commissioner, I did look into it. And some of the issues that had to come up and some of the questions you mentioned, you spoke with the county attorney and some commissioners in Waukulla. The square mileage of Gulf County versus Waukulla. In addition to that, the hauling mileage from where the counties collect it at their transfer station and where does the vendor take the trash to at its processing. Gulf County, Waukulla County have much different mileage in terms of their hauling after reviewing it since that December meeting that you requested. In addition to that, going back and looking at the specs in Waukulla County versus Gulf County. Gulf County was very specific in its meetings with the cities and the county staff, per the direction of this commission. The commission provided us the guidance as to what you all wanted and the county staff took that and developed the specs. They then created them in the EOC building on several joint meetings with the cities. It was ratified, it was introduced to the commission and it was put out to bid. Those, that bid for Gulf County is very specific. The other county that the commissioner's referring to has nothing with regards to paving a road or constructing a transfer station or the mileage that was comparable from Gulf County to Waukulla County. So in terms of apples to apples, because we lived the process, it's over two years, but you all instructed the staff as to what you wanted. That's what the specs were developed and that's what came back. And as I indicated before, there was only one vendor that gave a qualified bid to this county, which you then accepted through a contract in May of 2014.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing too with you, Mr. Chairman, regarding the recycling and the program that was attempted down on the Cape. That is a very difficult way to recycle when you have a bin and people have to drive it there and it gets overfull and people put their garbage in. What I'm talking about is roadside pickup. People can put their recycling on the curb, curbside pickup. They can, they have a bin, they put their recycling in the bin. That is what people in this community have been asking us for, for a long time. And they have it in Waukulla County. They have the pickup on the same day as they have their trash pickup, put their trash out, they put their recycling out. They could put their refrigerator out. And it, you know, Mr. Novak, I appreciate all of your information there. I'm not saying we are exactly the same as Waukulla County. My point is, it can be done. And I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Barnes?
Yes, I just want to bring up something just for informational. The kids down there, which is in, Commissioner Quinn and I, the league, we have two. I'm on one side of the road from there back and he's on the other side and I got money in the TDC. Out of district. Out of district. Cause both, it's all the children, all the way from the county line back, county line back, they go, we got Highland View. They all get something out of it and something that pretty much need.
Split it.
They asked for it back. They, they asked for it back and we don't have a.
So, you're aware that's there?
Well, matter of fact, we part it. And in the meantime, we've got calls that they want it back.
Okay, I'm glad seeing you.
As long as, you know, somebody can use it and that's, that's fine with us, you know, as long as we can.
Barnes? I can make sure everything's in, falls under the umbrella of being legal to do it and Quinn, get out. Okay, if you need some more, I'll throw some in.
And I know the children, it's something that, something they can do. That's all I got, Mr.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Commissioner?
Oh, sir, I don't have any things.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I received a call right before the meeting. Mr. Raffield, I'm glad it came when it did because we're here in a board meeting. One of his boats were coming, was coming in under the bridge this morning, we're talking about the Capa Bridge, ran aground. Butler, you in the tiny, and I'm glad we have some D P people here this morning with us. I'm also glad that notified the corps, but maybe they need to go out and see what's taking place there. But his boat ran aground. I don't know, I didn't, I came seventy-one this morning, I'll go back that way, but I don't know, might have an extremely low tide, I don't know. But anyway, he just wanted me to bring that before the board. Got a shallow raft. Also, I have a house similar to the one at seven-seven-two-four. I'm working, try to save the county from having to tear it down. Working, and we'll come back to the board later when we officially, we've already had a hearing on it, the judge has ruled in favor of the county. I'm working with the property owner, trying to see, neighbor said if he'll give him the lot, he'll clean it up. Cause if we have to clean it up, we'll be stuck with it. You can't sell this piece of property for what the county will have in it. So, I'm still working, but it will come back up. I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Ladies and gentlemen, that's all I have this morning. Well, thank you for your time and your patience. Also, while we're here, I wanna recognize, is Alex still here or has he already left?
He had to go back to the office.
Representative Gwen Graham's office, he came by and he's gone back. Anyone, if you need, any concerns with the federal government, Mr. Quintana up at the, is he at the fire station? One, he's up at the fire station here in Port St. Joe, will be up there probably at noon or one o'clock. Need anything concerning your United States representative, Honorable Gwen Graham, go by and see Mr. Quintana. All right, at this time, as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna move item number eight right up behind board business before we have a public hearing. And at this time, I'm gonna ask the Florida Department of Health here in Gulf County, if they would please come forward. As I said earlier, I just briefly touched, but there's gonna be a big transition taking place here. Ms. Lindman, thank you for being here this morning. Zack, always good to see you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Where's Sarah? I know she's back there somewhere. Hello, Sarah. Good morning to you. All right, Ms. Lindman, you have the floor.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We actually have three agenda items, two are fairly brief and one might take a little bit of conversation.
We'll grant you.
Okay, thank you. The first one is actually, we bring a county government award to present this morning and I'm gonna let Sarah Hines, our Health and Wellness Promotion Manager, make the presentation to the board.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello, Miss Sarah.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Hines. I'm here to present the Healthy Weight Community Champion Award to you. So, everyone has a role to play in reducing obesity. Schools, faith-based and community-based organizations, parents, and officials from all levels of government. Florida's county governments play an important role by implementing best-practice policies and programs that have been shown to increase physical activity and improve nutrition.
one, of course, is Health and Wellness Promotion in the community.
In Gulf County, policies include maintaining a system of parks, beautiful parks that we
But the, another very important role that we play is preparedness for emerging threats.
have, and bicycle routes, and supporting access to farmers' markets with fresh fruits
And so, we're here today in an educational effort to inform the community about the Zika
and vegetables.
virus.
These opportunities are helping to create an environment where the healthy choice is
I know that our folks in our community are hearing a lot on the television, on the news
the easy choice.
about the threat of Zika virus coming out of some South American countries.
And to celebrate these efforts and environmental change, the local governments in Florida
So, I've actually asked Zack McDan, Zack Hodges, our Environmental Help Manager.
were invited to submit descriptions of their jurisdiction efforts.
I don't care, Zack.
And for the second year in a row, the Gulf County Board of County Commission has been
Yeah, I'm sure I know exactly who he is, to talk to the community about what we're
recognized by the Florida Department of Health as a Healthy Weight Community Champion.
doing. But to give you some facts as we know it today, as of Friday, there were thirty-seven cases
So, on behalf of the Florida Department of Health in Gulf County, I'd like to present
of active Zika-infected patients in Florida.
you with this award and thank you for your commitment to a healthier environment for
None of those cases were contracted in the state of Florida.
our citizens.
Thank you.
All the people in the state of Florida who are known to be positive with the Zika virus
Thank you.
You ready?
Smile, Sandy.
One, two, three. Okay. were travelers from some of these countries.
Thanks, Sandy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, our focus from the Department of Health standpoint in responding to the governor's state of emergency to prepare for this is to educate our local healthcare providers about how to screen and monitor people for this disease, to educate the public for how they can prevent this virus themselves, and to work with our local governments, particularly related to mosquito control. So, Zack, I'd ask Zack to come and speak about our work that we're doing with local mosquito control.
Morning, Zack.
Good morning. My name is Zack Hodges. I'm the Environmental Manager for Gulf and Franklin. I'd like to give a quick update on my role in the Zika virus response. First, by thanking Mark and Austin with Gulf County Mosquito Control. I think we have a very strong relationship with them and as well as the Gulf County Emergency Prepared, Emergency Response, we can work with the G I S people there to produce, produce maps that we might need. Zika, it's a mild illness, mainly with rash, fever, joint pain are the three defining characteristics, lasting approximately ten days.
Hold it, Zack. I need a motion for, for the Health Department. Got a motion and a second here. Yeah, just, go ahead, Zack, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, I mean, that's the characteristics of the illness, lasts approximately ten days. It'd be considered a mild illness. From our, Gulf County's response, our message is mostly prevention-related, as you can see on the flyer I handed you. We're gonna concentrate for protecting our residents and visitors from mosquito-borne illnesses. We want them to drain all the standing water from around their property if possible, covering their skin with repellent and clothing, and covering all windows with screens. The type of mosquito that's involved here is what's known as a container mosquito and that means that they breed in water holding containers around your property. So, with this type, if you were to drain all these, you might not have that problem with the mosquito around you. If one's biting you, it generally bred within a hundred feet of where you're being bitten, this type of mosquito. So, and then if anybody in our county is planning to travel, CDC has a website devoted to, to travel advisories, so you can consult that and see if any of the countries you might be visiting, South America, Africa, Caribbean, are being affected at the time. So, that's my main message. And we have, we plan to put these flyers and that information up on our website and any relevant links to the CDC web, website.
Thank you, Zack. Thank you so much.
Any questions about the Commissioners about the Zika virus? Okay.
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you.
As he stated, the biggest way to prevent it is dump fuel.
It is. You know, one of the things I appreciate about.
They won't reproduce in running water and in a big lake, the small minnows will eat the larvae. But around your house, the biggest problem.
That's correct. We appreciate Mark and his team and Mark and I frequently call each other quickly when a new disease pops up. And I think the thing that he really, that resonated with me when I talked to Mark about this initially was, these mosquitoes breed in the little bitty drain pots underneath your flower pots, you know, the water that drain, that sits in a plant. I mean, they breed in those little tiny little amounts of water. So, you really wanna be conscientious about pouring off any standing water. Okay, so, those were two. Our third thing is, and while I'm thanking Mark, let me reinforce again what Becky did earlier. I too would like to thank the county crew for the help that they've been giving us at the Health Department. We, we have really undergone a fairly extensive cleanup of our building. It's a thirteen-year-old building. We have twenty-plus thousand visits that come through that Health Department every year and the flooring and the paint, it was really, it had taken a beating. And in preparation for the transition that we'll discuss with you in a minute.
Continue.
We've, we've asked for and received a tremendous amount of support and help from the county crew, building cabinets, helping move, you know, when you have to put new flooring down, oh my goodness, you have to pick up every single thing that's on the floor. So, I think if we had it to do over, we might reconsider. It was a pretty catastrophic upheaval of our space that we did while continuing to provide services. It was kinda like changing the wheels on the bus while the bus was barreling down the road is what it's felt like for the last couple of months. But we appreciate the, the support of the county crew, the work of the crew, and the support of the Commissioners as we've gone through this transition. Okay, so, the transition. The first thing I wanna say before I talk about the transition is, it's so important that I say this out loud, the Health Department is not closing. You know, the Health Department is not going anywhere. The Health Department, if anything, is really growing and extending its core public health services. What we are doing, starting tomorrow officially, is transitioning our federal clinic that does primary medical and dental and behavioral health services to the new federal awardee, PanCare Florida. That announcement, that federal grant award was announced yesterday, was a week ago. So, we've been scrambling over the last few weeks to prepare for this transition. But I wanted to just speak to you about PanCare. PanCare out of Bay County, the headquarters are in Bay County, they received this award. If you remember back in September and October when we were anticipating not reapplying and other folks were applying for this federal grant, the county and our health partners in the community met with and put their full support behind PanCare. The application went in in October and then we waited. But in November, our medical director of eleven years, Dr. Kevin Murphy died. Very unexpectedly, just a catastrophic impact to our staff, to certainly the community and the people who received services from him. I reached out to other local physician practices looking for, practices to transition these patients to who still needed physician coverage. PanCare offered up within a matter of days to bring a physician team to the Health Department. So, since November, PanCare's been running a satellite clinic in the Health Department, seeing a lot of these patients who really needed the kind of physician care that Dr. Murphy had provided. So, they became good partners for Gulf County long before this grant was awarded last Sunday. My goal from the very beginning and PanCare's goal and the community, the community's goal was, there would be no interruption of services to the people of Gulf County when we transitioned over to this federal clinic, over to the new award. And that our employees whom, whose positions were being lost by the loss of this funding, there would be no interruption in employment. So, it is with great pleasure today that I introduce to you the Chief Operating Officer of PanCare Health, Robert Thompson. Mike Hill is the president and CEO of PanCare and he had to be in Tallahassee at nine o'clock this morning and he couldn't be here and he wanted to be here. So, he has sent Robert Thompson and I'd like to introduce Robert to you and let Robert kinda talk to you about this transition that we're planning and any questions that you may have for him.
Ladies and gentlemen, while Robert's coming up, this is very important. Takes effect tomorrow. And we have, we've had great care through the Florida Department of Health and under Lindman's direction. We hopefully, we will have, let's say, we'll have the same or better, we will. Because they can concentrate on one area where Lindman and her staff had to concentrate on a broad range. Robert?
Welcome to Gulf County. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Welcome, welcome PanCare to Gulf.
Thank you. My name's Robert Thompson. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for PanCare Florida. Like Marcia said, Mike's not able to be here this morning. He's actually on the Steering Committee in Tallahassee under Surgeon General John Armstrong for the State Health Improvement Plan Project that's going on right now. Unfortunately, that meeting was started at ten o'clock today, so that's where he's at. I do wanna say thank you as well to the Commission. We did receive, towards the end of last year, a board resolution supporting PanCare's application for this grant. We certainly submitted that with our application and we realized how important that was in the final decision to give PanCare the award. We, like Marcia said, we did find out eight days ago today that we did receive the award that's to take effect tomorrow. So, needless to say, the last eight or nine days have been very busy. We've worked with Marcia and Sandy at the Health Department to identify the staff that would be, that were gonna be losing their jobs as a result of the F Q H C going away from the Health Department. There was about twelve employees that were identified that would be losing their jobs. We did meet with all twelve of those employees. We offered all of them full-time jobs with PanCare with benefits as well as raises. I'm happy to say that as of right now, nine of those twelve employees have come over and officially start with PanCare at eight o'clock tomorrow morning. We're gonna be doing medical, dental, and behavioral health services. We're gonna be co-located here at the Health Department Building in St. Joe. This week, we are gonna have limited services. There's gonna be a transition period involved. I wish we'd had more time from the government, from the federal government to put this together, but we have what we have here. So, this week, we'll be limited services. We're gonna be getting our I T together, doing training for staff with the anticipation of next week starting full-time medical and dental services here in Port St. Joe. Also, part of the grant was for us to take over operations of the dental clinic in Weewaw. The plan right now is, we've started this past weekend, we need to find a dentist. That's pretty important to run a dental clinic. So, right now, we're recruiting heavily to try and find a dentist to come down that we can hire onboard full-time to run the Weewaw clinic for us. In the meantime, Dr. Rhonda Willhite, who's the dentist here in Port St. Joe, will be going up there, probably two to three days a month to start off with, just to start services up there and see the urgent care needs of those residents. But like I said, our intention is to hire a full-time dentist as soon as possible to start services up there. We've started meeting with some people last week here in the community, try and get ourselves in the community and understand more about the healthcare needs. We met with Mary Jen Montgomery from Sacred Heart on Friday, as well as Nora Bailey from My Gulf Care. So, we're working on some programs with them to implement what they do into PanCare and vice versa, so we can. We offered all of them full time jobs with PanCare with benefits as well as raises. I happy to say that as of right now, nine of those 12 employees have come over and officially start with PanCare at eight o'clock tomorrow morning. We're going to be doing medical, dental and behavioral health services. We're going to be co-located here at the health department building in St. Joe. This week, we are going to have limited services. There's going to be a transition period involved. I wish we'd had more time from the government, from the federal government to put this together, but we have what we have here. So this week will be limited services. We're going to be getting our IT together, doing training for staff with the anticipation of next week starting full time medical and dental services here in Port St. Joe. Also, part of the grant was for us to take over operations of the dental clinic in Weewaw. The the plan right now is we've started this past weekend, we need to find a dentist. That's pretty important to run a dental clinic. So right now, we're recruiting heavily to try and find a dentist to come down that we can hire onboard full time to run the Weewaw clinic for us. In the meantime, Dr. Rhonda Willhite, who's the dentist here in Port St. Joe, will be going up there. Probably two to three days a month to start off with, just to start services up there and see the urgent care needs of those those residents. But like I said, our intention is to hire a full time dentist as soon as possible to start services up there. We've started meeting with some people last week in the community, try and get ourselves in the community and understand more about the the healthcare needs. We met with Mary Jen Montgomery from Sacred Heart on Friday, as well as Nora Bailey from My Gulf Care. So we're working on some programs with them to implement what they do into PanCare and vice versa. So we can develop and establish a good relationship with them for the residents of Gulf County. I've got some cards I can leave with all of you with my information on it. If you have any questions or concerns, anything we can help with, please, please certainly let us know. We're excited to be a part of the healthcare community here in Gulf County. We look forward to being here for a long time. And you know, we're always open if anyone needs any help or any assistance, please, please reach out to me.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you so much.
Marcia.
So in closing, commissioners, I just, the health department sent out last week 4,218 patient letters. Just notifying that the our active patients, our active medical and dental patients, that we were going to be transferring those services to PanCare. It it's a confusing, it's confusing. And and that's why I started this presentation with the health department is not closing. The health department is not closing, it's growing. And we're so excited to partner with PanCare as they provide the primary care services. If anyone in the community has any questions, they can continue to call the health department number and we can help guide them through and get the answers to their questions. A real common question that we have started receiving Friday and today are how do I get a copy of my medical records? If our clients intend to continue to see the PanCare providers, they don't have to come to the health department and do anything except schedule their appointment. And when they come to the health department for their appointment, we can provide a copy of their record to the PanCare providers. If anyone would like to transfer to a different provider, then they can come at any point in time that's convenient to them and get a copy of their records and we'll provide those. But the health department's not going away and folks can call our number if they have any questions. Thank you for letting.
Thank you, Marcia. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Robert. Ladies and gentlemen, utilize this services that these good people are offering here. We're fortunate county, we're one of the few counties in the state of Florida that has two health departments. One in the north end of the county, one here, so. Let's utilize these things and PanCare will be very, very easy to work with and all. All right, let's move right along. The next item, have item number five of public hearing is amending the RV recreational vehicle ordinance.
Mr. Attorney, you going to address that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chairman, commissioners, in front of each of you, you have a two pages. And it looks similar to this right here. It refers to section six of the Gulf County RV ordinance 2015-06. Prior to today's hearing and per your directions at the your last regular meeting, you instructed staff to notice a public hearing of the proper public hearing so that we can conduct consideration of an amendment to your RV ordinance. Following Ms. Griffin coming before you all last year and again this year, requesting some consideration for her historical use of her lot in the coastal corridor construction, coastal construction corridor for continued rental use moving forward. Based on your directions at your last meeting in January, we have proposed the following language. We've properly notified and advertised in accordance with statute 125 for a public hearing today. The statute also requires you to have a second hearing after five o'clock, which would also be noticed. You know, the way that around a five o'clock meeting would be a unanimous vote of the four of you today to have it any other time other than five o'clock under the statute. Today would be the first public hearing and I'm going to read the notice real quick, Mr. Chairman. It's an ordinance amendment of the Gulf County RV ordinance whereby amending the policies regulating recreational vehicles and their location placement RVs, per parcel, use and storage of RVs within both unincorporated Gulf County within the coastal construction corridor, which has been commonly referred to as the Gulf County RV ordinance. For said policies to be further amended, be codified and become part of the Gulf County LDR, providing for the repeal or severability and modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearings. The advertised notice and consideration was an amendment to the Gulf County ordinance for addition to section B five in consideration of a grandfather exception for continued rental permissibility of those affected parcel lots, parcel or lots within coastal construction corridor other than for personal RV use with the documented preexisting rental use, compliance with state and local regulations, taxing authorities and the application and approval period for said grandfathering exception up and until December 31st of 2016. The language that you have in front of you and I'll read it for the public prior to your public hearing. It's actually, it would not be section B five, we've added a section B six, so it would be separate and apart and clearly delineated. It reads as follows, a preexisting owner of a lot or parcel within the coastal construction corridor prior to the original RV adoption by Gulf County on January 27th, 2015 and submits proper application and required documentation prior to the expiration of this exception for a preexisting use. Application and eligibility shall sunset on December 31st of 2016. To the Gulf County Administration Designated Official of Proper and Compliant Recreational Vehicle Commercial Rental of the Parcel to Third Parties, including but not limited to demonstrating at least one year of prior history of TDC bed tax payments on qualifying prior rentals, shall be considered for special designation and grandfathering for continued rental use. Upon receipt of a special grandfather designation for continued commercial rental of the parcel, same shall continue in effect for that parcel until either the discontinuation of commercial use of the parcel for any period longer than one year and/or upon any recorded transfer title to the exempt property for this continued preexisting use. Following your discussions and prior public meetings, this language encapsulates the directive we received to staff. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, the floor is open. Questions? Question from the board? Want in the audience?
Hi, my name is Phil Weeks. I'm a property owner out in the unincorporated area. And I just wanted to verify or clarify, does this mean that RVs that are already there will continue to be allowed to rent out in the unincorporated areas? And if I may approach, I'd like to show you a picture of why. I'd like to show you a picture if I could. But that that's the reason if it is grandfathering in that instance, I'm against it for that purpose. You know, the RVs are way past the normal house lines, another 40, 50 feet towards the beach. And that's what we see. We get up, we look out and as a rental property, when we have renters that come in, the first thing they're going to see is another RV parked right beside them, 40 feet away and 40 feet out. And they're going to say, gee, this isn't the view that I came down here to appreciate because it is, you know, a beautiful area down here. Thank you.
Mr. Weeks, would you please, if it's not mandatory, but this one near lady over there, or if it's outside, you buy records, maybe fill out one of these.
I have.
You did?
I have turned, I have filed one of those and turned it into Mike Aiken. If that's the.
No, no, no.
I think it's a public speaking.
It's just showing you come. When the young lady over here is doing the minute, she can get your name correct.
Sure.
She can get in case someone does a public records.
Sure.
If you don't, it's not mandatory, we just would like for you to do.
No problem.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Are there anyone else? All right, we'll go back over. Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other public comment, as I indicated, this would be the first of two public hearings with regards to that proposed language. If the commissioners have any questions about section six that we've added, we've included the criteria that if someone does apply prior to the end of this year, that they'd be required to demonstrate that it was a preexisting use, including but not limited to showing that they had been paying bed tax on that property as a commercial venture for that RV. We will notice a second hearing. I would ask the commission, if there's no questions or further recommendations to the language, to give an authorizing vote for a convenient time for the county to have their second public hearing. Statute requires it to be after five o'clock barring a 404, a super majority vote of this commission for the second public hearing.
Gentlemen. Understand what the attorney. Motion over by Commissioner Barnes. Have a second.
What is the motion?
I've asked for a motion of the commission to authorize the county to.
501 or we can.
To schedule.
Majority and have whatever we want to.
The waive the after five?
That's correct. That's all I've asked for.
It seems to me that this is an issue that that people in the public would want to weigh in on. So I personally am not in favor of waiving the after five requirement.
Are you going to second?
You can vote it, you'll need four votes. So without four votes, a super majority, we'll notice something in March for a 501 meeting.
But you need a date.
We'll, yes, I'll work with the administration, advertising the paper has to be at least seven days out. So we'll work on a date and get it to the commissioners.
All right, fair enough. All right, Mr. Attorney, that takes, what about the Leave No Trace?
Yes, sir. In your agenda, the second public hearing today is with regards to your Leave No Trace ordinance 2015-07. The public hearing today is for an amendment to the ordinance of Gulf County, Florida prohibiting and regulating obstructions in personal property, abandoned on public beaches of Gulf County, Florida and commonly referred to as Gulf County Leave No Trace ordinance, requiring the posting of proper notice and signage at beach access points and daily, weekly and monthly rental units in Gulf County for said policies to amend, be codified and become part of the Gulf County LDR and providing for the repeal or severability and modifications that may arise. You've, most recently in your public hearing meetings, you've heard from staff. As to the staff meetings that have been conducted, the TDC has had their annual meeting. They've vetted out the comments and recommendations they've received, not only from their bed tax collectors, but also from the public and the visitors. Now, as we go past our one year anniversary on the Leave No Trace, they, you have in your packet today, the notice that's going to be approved. That is a new magnet that's going to be provided to your bed tax collectors. And they're incorporating the recommendations they've received. At your last meeting, there was direction to the staff to come back with recommendations following those meetings as to how we can tweak the Leave No Trace. And those discussions that we had were with the sheriff as well and he may have some additional comments today. The packet in front of you, the two pages, it says page 11 of the Gulf County Leave No Trace. It refers specifically and in the notice, section 16, 17 and 19. Two of the issues or the discussion points in those meetings with staff were the enforcement of the Leave No Trace and the administrative response in the spring and the summer as to the collection of abandoned property. You heard at your last meeting in January that the administration is going to have random sweeps after noticing violators on the beach after hours or an hour after sunset, tagging property. And then they come back the next day, know that it's supposed to be removed. So that warning system was going to be implemented by the TDC staff through the administration. The second item was with regards to actually the issuance of citations of the enforcement. And that's why we cited section 16, 17 and 19. The sheriff has indicated at the meeting, and I'll let him speak as to it, but with regards to the enforcement of beach driving and a lot of the other provisions in the ordinance, the sheriff has indicated he plays obviously a vital role. With regards specifically to abandoned property and the collection of it and the noticing of it, that is modified through 16, 19 and 20. Just to further clarify for the public that that would be a function of the administration and the county TDC. So we've we've strived to provide that clarification in here and modified some of the language that you see redlined on the page provided to you all. So I don't know if Ms. Jenkins or the sheriff would like to offer any additional comments and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we have had several meetings regarding Leave No Trace with the sheriff's department, county administration, as well as with Turtle Patrol. Our schedule will be directed by county administrator and we will go onto the beach, provide a warning before sunrise. Turtle Patrol would rather us do it in the morning and in accordance with the ordinance, you have an hour after sunset to remove and they can be, and your items can be put on once the sun has risen. So we will go out before the sunrise, properly document, photo tag, tag, do everything that we have to do to make sure that we are keeping good organization. The next day, we'll go back out again and if items are still on the beach, they're deemed abandoned. We will photo, do all our documentation be via timestamp photos and then bring them back up and they will be taken off the beach. The items are not up for recollection. Once they're removed, per the ordinance, they are deemed abandoned and they will be removed and brought up to the county. And that's how the TDC will do it under the direction of Mr. Butler. We are providing magnets to, we will be having probably in April, a partner reception after hours to discuss Leave No Trace with bed tax collectors or anybody who is interested in knowing about the program. We'll have rat cards and magnets for the them to take to put into their units. As well as the website is still up, the new ordinance is on there and we're just trying to get as. Turtle Patrol will also be talking to visitors when they're out there because they're, they'll start May 1st being on the beaches. And that's the way and working in accordance with the sheriff's department, we would be the abandoned property and they would be responsible for anything that could be issued a citation. Is that correct? Okay. Any questions?
Ms. Jenkins, make sure, you know, we're in compliance with everything.
Yes, sir.
That's number one.
Yes, sir.
Anyone on the board, any questions concerning this? Thank you. Chair? Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, if there's any public comment in the same, again, this is land use modifications of an ordinance of 10 or more continuous acres in the county and therefore to require a second hearing after five o'clock or in a four vote.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Let's go out to the public here. Anyone in the public have any questions, reservations concerned with the Leave No Trace? Thank you. Sir? You please come up. There you go.
The biggest problem is going to be the residents of Gulf County. They'll put this stuff out there and they've been doing it all their life and you're going to run into a problem with it.
They're going to have to comply with everyone else. It's going to be fair across the board.
We need his name.
Wait a minute. Mr. Bush? Thomas Bush. Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? If not, Mr. Attorney, will you schedule this along with the RV? Address them both at a date after 501. All right, sir. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Attorney?
No, sir.
Before we move. All right, ladies and gentlemen, next we're going to move down to item number six, which is a quasi judicial hearing. View in consideration of the planning department's recommendation on the following applications. We have one, a small scale land use amendment. Charles M. Kent, we have a various request, Mr. Monty Farrell. That's the two we have. So we begin to start with Mr. Attorney, I'm going to go over here, or to Mr. Lowry. What you, Mr. Lowry, you going to take this?
Yes, sir.
You going to take a read on this?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
First of all, this item that was tabled at a previous meeting. What I have here, I'm going to read the public notice that was sent out advertising this meeting on the small scale land use amendment. Quasi judicial hearing before the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. Meeting will be held Monday, February 29th at 9:00 AM. This hearing will be held in the Gulf County Board of County Commissioner Meeting Room at the Robert M. Moore Administration Building. The Board of County Commissioners will discuss, review and take vote on the following. Small scale land use amendment for Charles M. Kent, parcel ID number 03457-005R, section 35, Township 5 South, Range 11 West, County Road 386 North Over Street. A 2.07 acre parcel request for land use change from residential to agricultural. That was tabled at the January 26th, 2016 meeting. Excuse me. Second, what I placed in front of you was a memorandum from myself back at the January 26th meeting. What it is, is what I have highlighted in front of you. It was the recommendation of the planning board to you guys, the Board of County Commissioners, and I'm going to read that as well. The Planning Development Review Board recommends to the B OCC a 40 vote to deny the request for a land use change from residential to mixed commercial residential. for a land use change from residential to mixed commercial residential. Alternatively, the planning board has submitted a recommendation to the B.O.C.C. by 3-1 vote to consider a land use change from residential to agricultural designation. Mr. Kent has agreed with this recommendation and amendment to his request on the record. Mr. County Staff, along with Planning Development Review Board, expresses that the county commercial venture presented by Mr. Kent would be permitted under this ag land use designation, also reduce future density on the parcel, while meeting is expressed intended personal use of the property to extract up to 100 liters a day of water per day. Saying that, what you did, the board, has asked Mr. Kent to do at the previous meeting in January is to submit another application, free of charge, to us, which is in front of you as well, requesting that ag use designation. That's where we're at on that.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. Prior to your land use application in your quasi judicial setting, if you can, through the clerk's office, ask anybody that wishes to speak today to come forward, be sworn in, so they can provide testimony, unless anybody, including the board, the public, and the applicant, all waive that requirement.
Anyone? There are three hands come up.
Yes, sir. If folks- if there's any objection to waiving the quasi judicial-
I have any objection to waiving it? None whatsoever.
Okay, so if the record reflects that there's no objection to waiving the quasi judicial, you can move forward. Just simply a public hearing and introduce the applicant, Mr. Chairman.
Who wants to come first?
Mr. Kent, the applicant?
Yes.
You want to come forward and speak and present your case?
Mr. Attorney, does waiving the quasi judicial mean that these people do not even need to be sworn in?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Got it.
We objected to the waiving of that.
Wait a minute. You just said you didn't object.
No, no, I didn't understand. I'm sorry.
Didn't understand.
That's what we're here for.
Okay, we'll go back. I'm liberal on things of this nation. All right, you want them all come up at one time?
Yeah, as long as there is an objection, then your policy holds, and everybody will come forward and be sworn in by Ms. Woodward. Mr. Kent?
Mr. Warbacher?
Come on up.
Anybody else in the public wishes to speak, Mr. Chairman, as well?
You good people would turn face, Ms. Rondo, over here. He will instruct you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Mr. Chairman, if the applicant can first make his presentation and request, and then offer the other folks opportunity. Thank you, sir.
All right, sir. Mr. Kent, welcome.
Good morning again. Good morning again. My name is Charles Kent, and I came to this county in 1985. A long time, built a lot of houses. I'm well aware of these procedures and whatever. I just want to put in a water development plant, reverse osmosis, and I just pull water out of the 400-foot well and run it through a series of systems and unique equipment that's just been invented and produce number-one light water. It's- has no bacteria, and it's good for people like me with diabetes and cancer and things like this, and it's good for the health of everyone involved. And I just- I have no noise at all. I've got all the documents brought back with me this time again. There's no noise. There's no pollution, and I have my own private road leading to my property and from my property. No one goes onto my property unless they go onto Highway 386 and up my private driveway. And I just want to install this equipment, and hopefully everybody get healthy.
Mr. Kent, the only thing this board's going to address today, whether we grant you this land change. You want to change from residential to a mixed residential. That's the only part. When you start building buildings, you've got to see Mr. Knight.
Oh, yeah, I-
When you start selling stuff commercially, you've got to go to the Florida Department of Revenue. When you start watering, you've got to go through hell. So that's no- you know, what you want to do is fine. That's our primary function this morning, whether we grant you, we approve or disapprove of land change use. That's all.
Thank you very much.
For this board. Want to continue? You didn't turn on the clock, but anyway.
No, sir. I've been to five-
I haven't answered your question.
I've been to five meetings here, and I-
I know you have.
I've gone over everything, and I've done all the hoops.
You've listened to a lot of-
And I'm ready for a vote.
Okay.
If you'd be so kind.
Well, I hope that we're going to get that today, because this is- I know the third time that I've been- or this board has been. Okay? Your district commissioner over here, if she has any questions or any- no, I think she's very well aware of what we're taking on.
I do have a couple of questions, but they're more so for either Mr. Lowry or Mr. Novak regarding our LDRs. So whenever you- if you'd like me to ask them now, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kent, is that all? You have anything else?
I just want permission to change it from residential to agricultural in parentheses, aquaculture, has to do with water.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I can, if Mr. Kent has nothing else, just so we can keep the continuity, if you can go through the people that want to testify to you all, close that session, and then go into your board discussion. We can have it with staff, and you can take any action you wish to.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, we have three more. Let me ask a question. Are all three of you from the same residence?
Yes, I was too.
Yes, too. So, all right, what about you, young lady?
I'm a Suffolk.
All right. It doesn't matter. You can come first, or we'll let Mr. Warbacher come first. It doesn't matter. Morning.
Good morning.
Give your name, please, would you please?
Donald Warbacher.
Jeanette Kirkland.
First of all, I have the- I wrote a petition to talk to the other residents of Creekwood Estates and give their input, let them know what Mr. Kent was trying to do. And the ones that would answer the door when I knocked on the door signed my paperwork. Their concerns were the same as mine about drawing water out of the ground for processing and selling, and the effects it would have on their wells. Many of them expressed that they had to put in new wells because there was run dry, and they had to go deeper, and their concerns were all the same about the, you know, him drawing out excessive water, not only to supply his house, but also to supply this business that he wants to do. And also, I talked to Mr. Collins, who is the other adjacent property owner, and he had all intentions of coming down here today. He wasn't able to come short notice something came up, but he told me if you wanted his personal information to give to him, and he would, again, tell you his concerns that he has as being an adjacent property owner also. There's just a few things that I've pulled up. First thing is, Mr. Kent says he wants this for personal, for his personal use. You can see here that he has two companies already formed called Aqua, Wellness Aqua, and CNA Water for Life. So let's not even, you know, consider that this is for personal use. This is a business. He's planning on pulling the water out, producing his magical water and selling it. And any other things that are stated, you know, are contrary to what he's doing. The-
Even in the certified letter, he states that it's a business.
Right. Even in the certified letter he sent us, he said that there will be two to three employees, delivery vehicles, to pick up water on a weekly basis.
Do you need to see that letter that we got certified?
The concerns I have with it is, if this is a business, when you give him his agricultural designation- I'm sorry.
Motion to extend.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know I was on the clock. I'm sorry.
Second.
Hold it.
Okay. Okay, the- then I'll make this brief. The concerns is, he has- he said there was no wastewater produced by this equipment. You can see in some of these pictures that there is wastewater. There's a significant amount of wastewater. The medical system that he's trying to pull this water out is even higher because of the purity of the water he's trying to pull. Just rough math, he's going to have, if you look on page seven, he'll have, for every five gallons, I mean, for every 100 gallons he pumps, he'll have five gallons of recovered water and 95 gallons of wastewater. Because the way reverse osmosis works, there's water continually flowing through the system, and as it goes through the membranes, some of it gets taken out as the product water, and the rest just gets pumped to wherever. I don't know where he's planning on sending it to, but it's a significant amount of water. And since he's given us no details of what his plant is capable of producing, he just tells us about what he wants to do with the water. I don't think that, you know, he's clear of what he's planning on doing with the water. The other problems I have is with the agricultural designation itself, and I don't think it falls under an agricultural designation. At best, I think it falls under a- the actual- the commercial designation was probably the best one for this business, but it's either got to be a mining operation or an industrial operation. Agricultural use, crop lands, pastures, forestry, aquaculture, which Mr. Kent said, that's not water. That's growing things in water for harvest. That has nothing to do with pulling water out of the ground. Beekeeping. Industrial, this type of use includes wholesale, retail businesses used for manufacturing, processing, storing, and distributing of goods. Including this character uses which require primarily outdoor storage, or the industrial activity itself is conducted outdoors. Such uses include LP gas storage, distribution exceeding 1,000 gallons, landfills, hazardous waste collection, handling, and industrial activity association associated with fisheries and agricultural and processing, manufacturing, processing, and distribution. These are better, I think, designations for this. Mining is actually the removal of resources from underground, which includes water. Wikipedia says it's- water is a mineable resource, so...
All right, that's it, Pete, I think. Let me state again. This board, you go- all we're here today is either up or down, whether we can go to agriculture. When he starts, whatever, the other departments, you've got the Northwest Florida Water Management, you've got probably DEP involved, the Health Department, and, like I said, Department of Revenue of the state, which we have no part of that.
Yes, sir, but the-
Do you understand that?
Yes, sir, but the zoning is the mechanism that's going to give him the opportunity to put this well up, and I think that he should have went to those agencies to give you the information that he needed before he came for the request. I think he did this in reverse order.
I appreciate it, but that's it. You've had your time.
I need to get my letter back.
You need this back, young lady? You need it? Here, you can have mine and this, too. All right.
Yep. I'm sorry. Ms. Roberts, is that part of the- I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'll address the comments to you. I was just going to ask Ms. Roberts, if the letter being provided to her is the notice that was sent by the neighbor?
It was sent certified in the Altona.
Okay, so is that part of the packet, Mr. Lowry? Okay, so I believe that's already part of the public record, ma'am, but Ms. Roberts can probably check and make sure if there's a duplication from the application to what you're giving to her. Then we can give that back to you afterward. Is it the same?
I'm quite sure we've seen-
Yeah.
Mr. Warbacher, you and Mrs. Kirkland and the other young lady, I stated prior, if you would, before you leave, get with Ms. Lanier, where we can have a record, because, like I say, this is the third meeting. We'll make sure we get it.
Yes, sir.
Not mandatory, but it's just something. All right, young lady, I think you're next.
Hi, I'm Sandra Seavy, 8977-
Who?
Sandra Seavy, 8977 County Road 386. I'm- my husband and I are seasonal residents 10 lots down. I'm sorry I wasn't here last. We just got here in February. Even though we love to be kind neighbors, we would like to request a denial of this zoning change, basically for three reasons. Very first one is spot zoning. That concerns us. We're a residential neighborhood. I'm unfamiliar with the current usage that he wants to do with the water, but I'm more concerned about a future usage that that egg classification would give, that would then allow possible crops, animals, those types of things in the future, to someone else or to Mr. Kent. Also, if I have eight acres there, then what would stop me from coming in and asking for an egg in that same neighborhood? And we are a residential neighborhood. We drop down to 45 miles an hour in that section, and we have children. Our second concern, and I'm not sure, you may have said that this doesn't necessarily matter, but the aquifer, we're quite concerned about the aquifer. He's taking from a well 25 gallons of water, I read, is one thing. 250 a day would be another. 2,500 a day would be tremendously terrible for the aquifer. And then the third problem we see would be the Watapal Creek. It's a lovely creek. It's seen a lot of problems in the last 10, 12 years when we've been here. I'm worried about the discharge of water of the- where Mr. Kent's property is. The water flows into the culvert, which flows one lot down, right there, right into the creek. Again, unfamiliar with this process, but even if it's not this process, if it's an agricultural process, what other types of discharges could occur down into that creek? So the three problems that we see are the spot zoning, the aquifer, and Watapal Creek discharge. So we would like to request a denial. Thank you.
Sir, if you can entertain a motion to close the public discussion, and testimony has been provided, and you can open it up to the board and staff, so you can consider some action.
We'll entertain the motion to close for the- anyone else in the public? All right.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've got a motion here by Commissioner Bryan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner- Second by Commissioner Quinn, the other board. Question, anyone there? Any opposition?
I'm sorry.
All right. Motion to close passes 4-0. Now. All right, Mr. Attorney, you have anything else here on this?
No, sir.
Sure.
Okay.
Have a question.
Sure. I have a question regarding our RLDRs. Mr. Kent has told us that he already has the well in place. And we're told that he wants to extract up to 100 liters of water per day for his personal use. So, with the way that it stands now, is he prohibited from taking that water for his personal use?
I would, I would say no, and I believe he's actually got it tied in, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe he's got it tied into his residential house there.
So, I, thing is, he's asking to be able to draw this money for, I mean, this water, for his personal use, and he's permitted to do that, the well is already there, I, I can't see the need to go forward with this change. In addition to that, I think that we have, I think we've tried very hard to try to accommodate Mr. Kent. We like to try to let people do, use their property in the way that they desire to use their property, but we have received a lot of information that's contradictory, there's a lot of confusion as to exactly what the intention is. So, I'm going to make the motion that we deny the change to ag. We, I believe at the last meeting, we already voted along with the PDRB and denied the request for the change to mixed commercial. So, I will make the motion that, based on the information that we have received and that he can actually do this activity without changing the land use, that we deny the request.
Okay. Heard the motion. I have a second, or motion.
I second that motion, discussion.
Second by Commissioner Quinn, or discussion. All right. Commissioner Quinn.
Like Commissioner Bryan said, I mean, to me, there's a lot of red flags, and I'm on board with denying it, and the people come before us, and I wouldn't want someone to come in and just up and change my residential area to something like that, so, you know, I know the PDRB recommended, you know, change from residential to agricultural. I'm on board with denying it also.
All right, any further from the board? Anyone in, now we're in public, anyone in the public? All right, not, call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just two procedural matters. First, if I can, as we always do, ex parte communications. I'd ask each of the commissioners for the record, before you take any action, disclose to the public and the applicant and anybody here as to any ex parte communications you've had with regards to this application. If you can state it for the record, the person you spoke to, the nature of the discussions, so they know that that factors into your final decision. Mr. Quinn.
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Lowry's office on all my visitation, spoke just briefly with Mr. Warbacher, but, oh, nothing in detail, spoke with him.
I've just spoken with Mr. Lowry about basically the same things we've discussed here.
Thank you, Commissioners. I thank you for that. The second item is, any action that you do take, I'd ask that in your motion, you include the testimony you've received, as well as all the documentary evidence, the pictures, be incorporated as part of your decision, as substantial evidence to support any decision that you take today. But if you can include all of that over the last three meetings that you've heard, to support your decision on whatever you decide. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I will include in my motion all of the evidence and discussion that we have viewed and heard in these meetings. The decision was based on that.
All right, we're now vote. The motion is to deny this land change used from residential to a mixed residential agriculture. How you vote? Vote for the motion, how do you vote, Commissioner?
I vote yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Vote to deny. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Vote to deny, and the chair is gonna vote to grant it. Motion passes, 3-1. All right.
Can I say something?
No, sir, you've already been up.
We don't have the right to develop our own property, I've got 10 acres out there.
Sir, if you... Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, move on to the next item there, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the second one is the variance request from Mr. Monty Farrell.
So, are you here, Monty?
On, Monty.
Mr. Husband, are you representing him?
Yes, sir.
All right. Monty, are you here?
I believe Mr. Husband is...
I'm gonna represent him.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and introduce the recommendations.
Come on.
This was from our February 15 Planning Development Review Board meeting, and these were recommendations based on their findings. I'm gonna just read this memo to you. Please see below, recommendations from the Planning Development Review Board meeting from February 15. A variance request from Monty Farrell, parcel ID 03786-200R, Section 31, Township 6, South, Range 11 West, Highway 98, St. Joe Beach, Beacon Hill area, requesting a 10-foot variance into the 20-foot roadside setback. And this was what their recommendation was. The Planning Development Review Board recommends to the BOCC by 4-0 vote to allow an amended request of a 20-foot variance into the 30-foot roadside setback as listed on the amended site plan and current survey submitted by the applicant to the Planning Development Review Board on February 15, 2016, to allow for FDEP permitting under Section 34, Provision Number 4.
All right, now, if I understand you correctly, 20 and a 30 versus a 10 and a 20, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
I mean, tell me right off, I don't know these, where's this generally, where's this located?
It's on the Gulf side, seaward of the Coastal Construction Control Line on Highway 98 in the Beacon Hill area. Some of these, some of these areas, there's 20-foot roadside setbacks to 30-foot roadside setbacks.
Let me ask you a question. With this setback, will it put, I don't like to assume anything, but he's gonna build a structure there, or is that right?
That's correct, a residential.
Residential, okay. Will it be done in line, will it be stuck way out or back, will it fall, will it be in proportion to the other?
It appears that the neighboring two properties have, has been granted the same variance based on what I can see on the aerials there.
All right.
So, it'll put it right next to those two.
Everything be... All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, seeing procedural steps you took at the prior hearing, if you can, ask anyone that wishes to testify, first, ask if there's any objection to waiving a quasi judicial from the board, the public, or the applicant.
You heard the attorney, is any objection waving? All right, no objection.
Okay, if the record reflects that no one objects, including the board, if you can, conduct a public hearing and ask those that, and starting with the applicant, to come forward to provide you testimony and comment with regards to the request.
All right, we're open to the public on this. Mr. Husband, are you gonna represent, Mr. Farrell?
Yes, sir.
Please come up.
Thank you. I do have the amended project description, and also on the back of the page is a site plan, and it shows up in the contiguous line. I've also noted the fact of the 20-foot request into the 30-foot roadside setback into the project description as well. That's how the survey came back, the 30-foot roadside setback. And also, the other, the two homes on each adjacent side there appears with the survey to have received a variance for the same exact reasons, the shallow building depth areas there. And this will put those exactly contiguous with those other two structures already in place. Also, we are doing a single-family residential home on parcel number 03786-200R in Gulf County, Florida. It's actually located in Beacon Hill, along US 98 on the Gulf side. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer any other question.
Okay. Any questions on this variant? It was a 4-0 vote by the planning board to grant this. Any other board members?
I just have a comment. This is clearly something that we have granted in this area. It's unfortunate that we have to go into the setback and move, and move the structures closer to the road, but under the circumstances of those properties, it's something that needs to be done. And I, based on that we have continually done this, and it's happened over time, I would go ahead and make the motion that we...
All right, but I gotta go to the public here, and then we gotta close this. Gotta go to the public.
While we waive the quasi judicial.
Just a moment, just a moment, I will. Anything else, and I'll come back to you, Commissioner. Anything else, Jackie?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Jack. Anyone in the audience, before we close this? Anyone in the audience? All right, need a quick motion to close on this setback. No move, variance request. No move. Quinn, do I hear a second?
I have a second.
Second, Commissioner Barnes, any other board discussion? Audience, motion to close passes 4-0. Now, Commissioner, recognize you over here.
All I make the motion that we...
Okay, here we go.
Accept the recommendation of the PDRB and approve the setback, the variance in this setback.
Motion by Commissioner Bryan, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Barnes?
If you can just include, again, the testimony that you were provided, the documentation all as part of the substantial record to support your motion.
Based on the testimony that I was provided and the information that was presented in this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, it's kinda getting long. We got a second by Commissioner Barnes, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? If not, this variance pass 4-0. All right, taking care of that. Now, we're gonna move to item number seven. We have two gentlemen, thank you for your patience. Jim, you and Pierce, I think you're next up.
I knew I'd be in the middle of texting something when you said that.
Young man, give this young lady her names and who you represent.
Pierce Barrett, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, 3900 Commonwealth Boulevard, Tallahassee.
And you, sir?
Jim Oskwiz, let me spell that, O-S-K-O-W-I-S. I'm with the same office in Tallahassee, same address.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Pierce. I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman, good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief overview, this is probably about a year late coming to the board. The last two years, we've been in discussions with your staff, Mr. Butler and other county staff, on the projects that Gulf County has received. Gulf County has received either directly or indirectly eight projects out of the Deepwater Horizon oil spill, which occurred, as everybody knows, in April of 2010. Since then, projects have been received by the department, were vetted out from the eight counties affected directly by the oil spill, which has wall colored through Escambia County. We are currently into Phase 5 of the early restoration program. Phase 1 has been completed, that was in Escambia County, several projects over there. Phase 2 are ongoing environmental projects handled by our sister agency, the Fish and Wildlife Commission. Those involve the sea turtle restoration and the shorebird restoration projects, those go on for another five years. We, the projects that you have are in what we call Phase 3. And when I say directly or indirectly received projects, I'm including Port St. Joe and the Department of Environmental Protections projects, as well as projects from Fish and Wildlife, which I just mentioned. The DEP project is a restoration of the seagrass in St. Joseph Bay. The projects that Fish and Wildlife is doing for the city of Port St. Joe is the revitalization of the Joe Frank Pate Boat Ramp. The projects the county directly had vetted were the Indian Pass Boat Ramp, which has since been removed at the request of the county. Then we also have the Highland View Boat Ramp, which we're in the process of, and my counterpart, Jim, will discuss those, as he's directly the project manager. Also is the Beacon Hill Veterans Memorial Park. I would like to take a moment from the earlier discussion we had this morning. One thing I want the board to know is, in our projects, we make sure that any future plans for any areas in and around our projects is taken into consideration with what the NERDA project directly is doing. So, with that in mind, I'd like to have a map, Mr. Butler, of what you gave out this morning, and we can make sure how that affects what's already going on with the NERDA designs, and make sure that we don't prohibit or directly impact what you may have for the veterans. Thank you very much. Okay, the other project in, on top of the Beacon Hill project is the Windmark Fishing Pier project. That project is a little longer in the tooth than the other two projects due to the environmental issues that have to be taken care of, both on a federal level and state level, before we can finalize that project. Right now, we're, have finished negotiating with NOAA on the fishing pier as far as some environmental issues, and we'll be doing what's called an acoustic impact study, which incorporates both your pier and two piers in Bay County, as the effects of building that pier on sea mammals that may be affected by the impact of pile driving. So, that study is gonna be started this week, will be done in a couple of months, and at that time after that, we will move into engineering, design, and permitting. So, I expect that progress will be, process will be about a year or more in the permitting and design of the pier, and then we will begin construction on it. So, if you have any questions on what I've just stated, I'll turn it over to Jim. Okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Chairman McDaniel, Commissioners Bryan, Barnes, and Quinn, and Administrator Butler, thank you for this opportunity to update you on these two projects. I know it's very important to the county commission and also to your residents, and we are doing our best to move them along. Let me talk about Beacon Hill first, and the prior discussion was timely. In looking at this highlighted area, it does include part of the amphitheater, the seating, but I think that was just a broad brush of the highlighter. And I think we can, we can probably stick with the amphitheater where it is. We're at 60%, because I've been pushing the designer to move ahead, because I was hoping I could get construction completed by Veterans Day, because I think there's some type of event that the veterans wish to hold on Veterans Day. And we should be completely done by mid-April with plans, then we have to go through the red tape of, you know, bidding and awarding the contract. But the amphitheater, let me tell you, the amphitheater was fixed in this location for two reasons. Not to obstruct that beautiful panoramic view of the Gulf, and also so that when people were viewing the amphitheater, they would not be impacted by the sun as much. It's really the best location for it.
Motion to extend.
Oh, I only have three minutes?
No, 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 we're good.
Okay.
Second.
Go ahead, Jim. But we're, we're implementing what the board proposed a few years ago, the amphitheater, the parking, renovating the restrooms, and so forth, and so, we're not doing anything less or anything more than what was proposed by the board a few years ago. We're within budget, hopefully, we could be anywhere from $60,000 to $120,000 under the budget. I did... I did get an estimate, but with all cost estimates that are provided by consultants, you never know until you bid the project. But I think we're gonna have a surplus at, you know, for this project as it's being implemented. Let's talk about Highland View. Highland View is very important, too. I've been to Highland View several times. I'm not a boater. I was there last night, and I did notice some boats having some difficulty getting back into the ramp. We are at the point where I located utilities, you have six utilities at that boat ramp, five of which crossed the intercoastal waterway at that point. And I was told by the, the reason I took time in looking at utilities, I was told by the contractor, Tedder, that built the first ramp, that the reason it was built at the elevation that it is was because of his, or the concern by the county about the depth of power line or gas line. After, and what I did is I hired a company that looks at depths of utilities, not only above ground, but they have equipment where they can estimate the depth. According to them, the depths of both the natural gas line, the St. Joe gas line, and the power line are at sufficient depth that I think construction of a new ramp is very feasible. Subsequently, I'm gonna work with Preble Rish, gave them some information today on that survey. We should be able to execute a contract or what we call a task assignment at DEP with them by the end of next week. Our program attorney has looked at it. Preble Rish has looked at it. I've looked at it. Their fee is very reasonable. But what we're gonna do is, we've tasked them to develop 30% plans and provide an estimate as best they can. Of course, it's a simple project, you know, we're talking about demolishing a ramp and building a new one. And look at that estimate, because the funding that was proposed a few years ago by the commission was only $150,000. And we think that's a few hundred thousand dollars short of what we'll need. So once we get the estimate, then we will look at the possibility of supplemental funding for the project. Can't guarantee you anything, but I think, I'm amazed, too, at what boat ramps and access docks and, you know, sheet piling costs, I'm kinda new to this type of design, they're very, very expensive. And so, when we get to the 30% level, which should be about, I'm not gonna hold Preble Rish to anything, but it'll be several weeks before they give us that, then I have to go back to my management, say, "It looks like we need this much more money. Can we take a look at supplemental funding for the project?" Because I know the commission's already told us via Mr. Butler that if we can't lower the ramp, you don't want us to do anything out there. Right? I mean, any questions, Beacon Hill?
See, this dream of reality.
Yes, sir. I'm doing the best I can. I appreciate the cooperation. I mean, I've met with Mr. Butler at Highland View Boat Ramp. You're correct, it's a much-needed improvement, and I think will greatly enhance use of that boat ramp. In fact, it may get too crowded some days.
Okay. All right, Jim, is that all?
That's it.
Thank you. You and Pierce have a very safe trip back.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say also, Pierce and Jim, thank you so much for being here today and giving that update and waiting so long to give it. So I do appreciate it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. Number nine has already been addressed. Mr. Arring addressed that. We're gonna move to item number 10. Abby and Joe Strickland, are you still here?
Yes.
Yes, you are, please come up. Good morning.
My name is Abby Strickland. This is my husband, Joe Strickland. We're at 227 Moonrise Drive Avenue, Cave San Blasts. We're here about the RV ordinance. We bought our lot in 2014, and we've been developing our lot for rental purposes and private use. In 2014, we put the pad in, the sewage, all the necessary stuff that we had to do. And we weren't really ready in 2014 for rental, but then when the RV ordinance came in, we saw that there was some, well, the 2015 one didn't have anything to do about not renting. We had a little bit, but the last one said that we, you know, we weren't, we're not able to rent. And we're here for either an exemption or hardship. My husband is a disabled Vietnam veteran, and we really depend, we're depending on this money coming in. I myself have a disability, too. I'm still working, but it won't be much longer that I won't be able to work. On Moonrise Drive, there have been RVs in that area for I don't know how long. There's old pads, there's, our neighbor has been there for 10 years. We bought the lot under contract as an RV lot, and I have that here. We applied for the tax ID already, we have that, but we are waiting on some kind of decision on what we need to do. We're trying to go by the guidelines, and we need this income. This is gonna be taking money out of our pocket if we're not able to rent this lot. And that was our intention. The intention says in the contract that it is, it is being sold as an RV lot for purposes of, as an RV lot for our use, and we have the contract here. So we're kinda at a loss as what we need to do.
Yes.
Sure you can.
Anything we can do to help them, in your opinion?
Just the Stricklands, if I can ask them a couple of questions.
Sure you can.
Mr. Strickland, is it, is it, you wanna use the lot for your own personal RV use?
That and also, our intent when we bought it was to rent it out when we weren't there.
And, and so you said you purchased it in 2014, correct?
2014, before the regulations came into effect.
So, so the first part of that question is they can continue to use it because it's a pre, they're pre-existing ownership, so they can always use that lot for themselves. The question is, can you use it for RV rental use and commercial venture? I don't know what the commission's gonna do with regards to the language that you heard earlier during the public hearing. They've created a ordinance exception for folks that can demonstrate that they did rent it out prior to that. And I don't, it doesn't sound as though, it sounds as if you poured a pad and you had every intention of renting it out after you had it ready.
Right.
Whatever criteria the county commission decides is appropriate to say whether someone was pre-existing or not. I know the one thing that was been discussed in the meeting was the collection of TDC tax and payment to the Department of Revenue.
Exactly.
In addition to that, I don't know what else they would make. So I know in terms of personal use, the Stricklands would be allowed under the ordinance because they pre-exist that. In terms of rental, it sounds as though, as it's currently written, that they would not be able to rent out that lot.
I do have to say something, though. After the RV ordinance came into effect in January 2015, there are other lots that were bought after the ordinance came into effect, and I know this for a fact because I researched it. They are renting out, and they are in, they're incurring this revenue. Now, there was an RV ordinance in effect, they were able to buy the lot and to develop it after the 2015 January ordinance. So my issue is, these are people that are using it, I was told illegally. We're trying to go by the regulations. We've already gotten our permit, our decal. We're coming here to the board, yet we're not able to do it, and we were already grandfathered in in 2014, I mean, we bought it in 2014. But the one, there's, there's a lot to this day that I looked up that was bought in 162016 that has an RV lot on it.
Renting it out.
So, you know, it's gotta be, it's gotta be across the board.
I hear you, I hear you.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just so the Stricklands know, that's in violation.
Exactly.
And the code enforcement is responsible. And now that the county's taken its step and clarified as to commercial rental, Ms. Strickland is correct, if it was purchased after that January 27th, the 2015 date, then it's not prohibited to have an RV on it at all, except for two 14-day passes that they can go and apply for. So they'd only allowed to be there for up to 28 days a year. So if they're there and renting it out, they'd be in violation that they're speaking of.
We have code enforcement there if we address this.
So we can't, as far as...
We're sending code out in the area.
Okay. Well, I don't want anybody to have to, and if they're in violation, they're in violation.
If we all play the ballgame, we all need to play by the same rules.
Exactly.
And there is exceptions.
As far as the hardship is concerned, with our intent, we didn't have the resources to get our pad ready and our electric. It took from August 2014 until the day after Veterans Day of 2014 to actually get my electricity turned on because of Duke Energy, because there were emergencies, one after another. Now, I don't think that a homeowner, a house owner homeowner would have taken that long. So that, that's another thing. That's what put us back as well. You know, there's some discrimination going on around here. There really is. I had a lady that I saw on the other commission, one of the meetings, that said she didn't wanna have to look out, just like this gentleman up here, to see a, an RV next to her, and it turned out that that RV had been established way before she even built her house. So she was aware that there was an RV lot next to her, and she built her house anyway. So it's, y'all are bumping people out.
Ms. Strickland, let's get back to the original point here.
Okay.
The question that you came before this board was simply, "I have an RV, I have a lot that I wanna put an RV on. I wanna use it, times I wanna rent it."
Correct.
Now, that's what we, that's what you're really up here for. We've got mushroomed out into a lot of things here. Now, the attorney over here, he handles our legal side, I don't, but as he explained to you, yes, you can put a, there to live, and as far as renting out, I think you would be in violation there. I don't know.
May I make a comment?
Sure you can.
In 2014, there were no restrictions when we bought the lot. We spent several years trying to find a spot that had no restrictions. When we purchased it for an RV lot, we had the intention to rent it out when we got it prepared. We're getting close to getting prepared where we want to, but the 2015 has put us out of it, and I don't think that is, you know, it was purchased as an RV lot for us to do as we enjoy it to do.
You gonna leave this same RV on this lot, or will it come off and somebody, when they rent there, put it?
It's not gonna stay down there. No, it's not a residential lot. We're gonna come enjoy it, and in, in certain parts of the month, we're gonna rent it out a week or two at a time.
Yes, sir. I think there's a question here from the board owner. I know a question here. Mr. Attorney, if we've got any more you'd like to shed on it? Board, any direction from any of the board members?
The only comment, Mr. Chairman, I could offer the Stricklands is that their next public hearing, it is, you've amended the ordinance.
Exactly.
At your next meeting, whenever they notice that meeting for, is when you're gonna craft your language as to exceptions for commercial use of RV in that corridor. So if there is ever a time and place to do, it would be at that meeting to offer that comment to the commission or possibly in advance, so they can consider what you're asking for. As it currently stands, they made, I believe in your original ordinance, you made an exception for pre-existing owners to have their RVs there, and they carved that out, so you guys are legal in having your RV there. And now they're considering pre-existing uses for rentals. So whatever criteria they come up with at that next public hearing in March, that would be probably the time for you to come in and offer those comments or suggestions to them.
Okay.
Original ordinance has to go through processes.
Can I have just one more?
Yes, and that's, okay.
Okay, that'll be it. I'm on a roll now.
Another gentleman on here.
Okay, so the ones that are in violation now, from what I understand, that up to December 2016, if they can, or whoever can provide documentation that they've been paying the bed tax and the, and the state tax, that they would be, you know, grandfathered in as far as rental. Is that including the ones that have lots that are on there that went after the RV ordinance in 2015? The rental lots?
I don't know of anyone that's come here before this board, excepting Miss Griffin over there, and she does, she has a documentation.
I'm talking about the ones that have, you know, that, well, I mean, I would comply. I've already gotten my tax ID and all that. I would comply as well. I'm talking about the ones that are being, that are not supposed to be renting at this point.
Let us do this. We're gonna set up at the commissioner's request over here, a 501 meeting, and we'll select a date, and that'll give us time, give us, discuss with the attorney or Mr. Butler over here. Give you people time, and I urge you, and it'll be noticed to come back to that meeting.
Okay.
Maybe we can, we can go back and research this ordinance and pick out what we... I don't wanna tell you something here today and have to back up on it.
Would that be the next monthly meeting, or we don't know?
It would be noticed.
I'll be in notice? Okay.
501 in the afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
Send out a notice on you.
Okay.
Thank you, good people. Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Commissioner, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. All right, the last one before we go to public, Mr. Let these people get some.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mike.
My name is Michael Barrett. I live at 157 Polaris Drive. I have two things on the agenda, so you'll just, one after the other?
Sure.
Okay.
Let her go, you got three minutes. Let her go.
The first issue I'd like to speak about is public safety in the county. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Butler, Mr. Whitfield, and the commissioners for adding the second 24-hour advanced life support ambulance that runs out of Port St. Joe. Great start. So my understanding now is that we have two 24 advanced life support ambulances out of Port St. Joe. We have one ALS ambulance in, sorry, in Weewahichka, that the paramedic and EMT are together to a specific time in the day, and then that the EMT goes home. And then there's some, there's an on-call plan or whatever. Couple of questions. How much would it cost the county to implement that this EMT driver is a 24-hour position instead of being part-time?
All right. Mike, freeze this time, would you please, at 1:42? Send him back at 1:40. I'll let Mr. Whitfield, we're, we're working on it right now. We've got this in, take care, but let Mr. Whitfield, he's, he's our EMS director, and he can tell you. Houston?
Our budget, our new budget meeting starts shortly, and at that time, I'm gonna have some figures for him, to put those to him, if we get to a 24-hour EMT in...
And paramedic in the north end of the county.
Yeah, we'll have a 24-hour paramedic.
We do now, but we'll have a, we'll have a team there.
Right.
That is in the works.
Okay.
All right.
Well, that kind of answered some of the other questions I had, 'cause I was reading through the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was reading through the Florida statute that covers EMS providing, and it states that to be considered an ALS, which is advanced life support, you have to, has to be staffed with a EM, with a paramedic and an EMT. And so I guess it was more of a legal question, since we've got lawyers everywhere, is, is there a liability for us as a county that we have not the same type of EMS coverage in the north part as we do in the south? I want the same for everybody. So if that's in the works, that's wonderful.
It's in the works, I'll share it is.
Okay. And again, I'm just asking questions.
Sure.
I'm not complaining because I, the, you know, the sheriff's department, EMS guys, they rock. They really do. I look at the size of this county and look at the resources that they have, you know, they rock. they rock. As far as the sheriff's side, again, I think I've mentioned this before, this is a dangerous profession. This is, you know, we live in a world now, especially where police officers are the target of the day, unfortunately. I think FBI statistics show that so far this year, we've had 14 line-of-duty deaths in law enforcement.
At one year yesterday, I think, Virginia.
Right. And again, correct me if I'm incorrect, but on patrol every day, there's three sheriff's officers for the county. Can I have three more minutes?
I'm trying to extend.
Second.
Okay.
Three minutes.
Okay. What concerns me about that is, I know there's one in the south, one in the north, and the supervisor, I call him a free safety in the middle, he goes either direction. Well, I'm not sure how many people in here have ever had to experience making a felony stop as a police officer, and be by themselves for maybe 20 minutes without backup, that concerns me about coverage.
A lot of safety.
Yep. I'll be the first to tell you, I don't like paying taxes. But you know what? I'm willing to dig into my pocket to give these folks the resources that they need. I would like for you to consider the following. We've already talked about the Weewah ALS, which is being taken care of. I would like to see phased in over three years, the sheriff has nine additional patrol officers. I mean, I know he has lots of stuff to do, but he also needs more patrol officers. I would like to see it phased in over a two-to-three-year period, a 15% across-the-board pay raise for all the sheriff's department employees and for the county EMS. They deserve the support, and we deserve that level of protection. And I thank you for your time on that. If you have any questions or comments about that issue, throw them at me, if not, I'll go to number two.
Please.
Okay. Our walkway path and bike path out in the Cape, Shazam. Every day when I travel up and down, I'm confronted with front-end loaders, dump trucks, construction trailers, beer trucks, MediaCom, Fairpoint, Lighthouse Utilities, and Even County vehicles. And these are on the walkway paths. There's almost less traffic on the road than there is on the bicycle paths now. I understand there's construction going out there, and some of it can't be helped, but on a day-to-day basis, there are beer trucks stopped at different restaurants and stuff, they're parked on the bike path. MediaCom, Fairpoint, Lighthouse Utilities, they're on there every day. They're forcing people who are riding their bicycles out onto the county road. And it's not a matter of if somebody's gonna get killed, it's a matter of when. And I understand that with the construction, the county only has so much control, but y'all can talk to the people from the utilities around here. You can talk to the restaurants about them not having their beer trucks parked out on there. And the other thing that doesn't make sense to me is, we have an ordinance that says you can't drive a motorized vehicle on that, or park it on the bike path. I don't want this gentleman using his resources to have to go out there and do that. I think y'all have the power to reach out to some of these people, some of these companies here that you have relationships with, and make it quit.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Butler, get together on that, and maybe these people, I'm sure, they may be not aware.
Okay.
Time, you know, like I tell a lot, if you don't tell me, I don't know, if you tell me, then I can't.
Right. And one other thing, real quick, Mr. Barnes has been very good with communicating with myself and people out there who he represents, and he has made it apparently clear to us that when there are issues, that he appreciates us reaching out to him, and we don't agree on everything, but I have people that love me that don't agree with me on everything, but he's proactive instead of reactive, and I appreciate that.
And ask that to this board.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
The last item, anyone, public discussion, anyone in the public? Either one.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Kristy McElroy, representing the Port Authority today.
Okay, I'll be really brief. As you guys may be aware, the Port Authority did ask and voted for me to do the application for Restore as we move through that process, as well for grants. It's very important that we get support from not only the county, the cities, but also regional support. I'm here to share with you that we have gotten resolutions and letters from the following agencies and counties. Opportunity Florida, Career Source, Appalachia Regional Planning Council, Gaston County, Wacola County, got a resolution from the city of Port St. Joe, and last week, I was warmly received from the county of Calhoun, and they also voted for a resolution and letter of support for our Port Authority. Everybody understands that what ports provide as far as revenues, security for jobs, et cetera. I do want to pass you out, and many of you have already seen this before, but I would like to pass you out the application. I streamlined the process as far as the document goes, even shared it with Wayne Stubbs from Panama City Port Authority, who is also the chairman of the Port Council, along with Doug Wheeler, so I'll share this with you. If you guys would just quickly turn to page three, I'm not gonna go through this entire 12-page document, but if you just run over to page three, there are a couple of things that I just want to point out to you. I've mentioned this statistic before, 90% of all worldwide goods are moved by water, 90% of all worldwide goods. If you drop down and you see overall waterborne commerce contributed approximately $4 trillion to the US economy, $4.6 trillion. In 2014, it showed that ports created 23.1 million American employment opportunities. Now, these aren't just everyday minimum wage jobs. If you drop down a little bit further, Florida seaports facts from 2014, national wage for non-advanced degree job is $54,000 a year, $54,000 a year. So, if you just look at what these businesses that are, whether they're direct businesses or indirect businesses, contribute to taxes, these businesses contribute $321 billion in federal, state, and local taxes. So I won't go through this entire thing, I think the main thing is, all major cities that are cultural centers, are vacation centers, they are port cities. Some of our oldest cities that are successful cities are port cities. This is a regional concept, and I'm here to ask today for a letter of support from our dear and wonderful county.
Yeah, someone?
And just to let you guys know, and I know we're early in the process, but I did do the application for the Port Authority, for Restore. Dewberry, who is the consultant, they ranked that application number one, and it got the highest scoring. And I know, again, not trying to put anybody on the spot here, but, and I know we're early in the process, but being a highly competitive individual such as myself, I was glad to see that all that money that you guys paid me to do that, which were, was $0, was a good return on investment in getting that application in and rated number one.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, anyone else before we close the meeting? Gentlemen right there, come on up, sir.
I'm Roland Wilson, 7151 Cape Town Blast Road. For the information of the public, where was the time and date of this meeting put? Was it advertised anywhere? The only reason I found out about it was CCA sending my wife an email.
It's in the minutes.
In the minutes of what?
I'll be happy to answer, Mr. Chairman. The county advertises its meetings, Ms. Roberts and the clerk's office posted on the administration building and in the county courthouse regularly the week prior, so that's the public notices required by statute. In addition to that, there's several public hearings today that were run by statute in advance in the newspaper, so there was two, two, two run.
It was not in the newspaper.
Which are you referring to, sir?
Star.
Okay.
This past week, no, I went through it twice, looking for it.
Yes, sir. If I can, Mr. Chairman, the statute doesn't require that the county's commission's meeting being posted. In addition to that, the public hearings that you heard today for ordinances, the statute and the legislative intent that's included in the notice requires, encourages counties to run it in a periodic circulation that has five or more days, that's the news herald, so those public notices will run the news herald consistent with the statute, but I don't believe that the county runs ads, pays for ads for the public meetings that you have on your regular meetings. I could be wrong, Ms. Roberts, but I don't believe you guys run it in the paper.
In essence, you're running a private meeting, is what it amounts to, for the citizens of this county. Most of them don't play with computers, I don't. Most of them don't belong to CCA. Some of them get the star, which sometimes the paper and sometimes a fish wrapper. Where, where are people supposed to find out? I don't go to the courthouse and look on the door to see what's there, I look in the paper. You're running the thing for your own benefit, is what it amounts to. Little or no concern about the general public, you've changed your meeting from in the evenings at 5:00, when working people could come, to in the mornings at 8:00 or 9:00, and it used to be on a regular basis, every other Tuesday during the month. Now, I don't know when it is. And because of the CCA, I knew about this, when it could be on a Monday, it could be on a Tuesday, it could be 8:00 o'clock or 9:00, whenever you feel like doing it, and nobody has any information, other than going to the courthouse, or in some out-of-town paper.
Mr. Woody.
Wilson, Roland Wilson.
Had you a read?
And I appreciate it, but consider what I said.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I mean, I completely understand Mr. Wilson's point and agree with him, this is something that I've had as one of my issues since I got on this board, that we need to be more transparent, we need to be more open to the public, and this, moving this meeting, a lot of people didn't know about it, I tried to get the word out, but it would have been wise to run an ad in the star, so that people understood that we had to change the meeting, because some of our commission and our administrative staff were at a conference in Washington DC, that fell on that week. But it is something I think that we need to work harder at getting the notice out to the public, and when we have a special meeting, we need to have a longer notice, not 24 hours or two days. But I think that we should move the meetings to the evening. I've had that position since the beginning, and I think we should go back to two meetings a month. And if we had one meeting in the morning and one meeting in the evening, I think they should both be in the evening, but one meeting in the morning and one in the evening would be a big step, and people who cannot come in the daytime could come to the evening meeting. And I'm gonna make the motion again, that this board goes back to two meetings a month, one meeting in the morning, one meeting in the evening.
Mr. Chairman, I know you've had discussions about in the past, I'd have to research the minutes to let you know specifically what the motion was, I don't know off the top my head, sir.
I can say this, since we went to morning meetings, about twice a people here, in the cold winter months, a few people, yeah, more people, out there sitting right now that's been here three hours, and we'd have them some of the night meeting. Lot goes into this, you don't get the whole picture, just get a part of the picture. Young lady right here, let me use you, Sherry, as an example, please. She puts in a full day, has an hour before the evening meeting starts. She has two little ones, she may be 10 o'clock at night getting home, she's gotta find somebody to keep her children. We have questions during this day, we have to pay, tax money has to pay these people. During the day, we need something out of the clerk's office, we can skip right over there and get it. Need anything, we can get it, everybody's fresh. But that's one of the big things for our employees, we have, we've done a survey on it, we have more people here during the morning meeting, a lot of the evening, a lot of the elderly people don't want to be on the road at night, so that's one of the reasons we can get more business done, it's been a lot better, a lot better. I just want to throw that in there, there's reasons behind it. One of it is, well, we have to pay these people after they complete their job, and they pay over, gotta be paid. Do it, I'd have to pay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's really not a valid point. I worked for a police department years ago, and we had evening meetings, when we had to attend the meetings, we adjusted our schedule accordingly. Come in later, you stay later, you don't have to pay overtime, there might be some situation where something runs later than you intended, but in practice, you would come in later and allow for that time for the meeting. So, there are ways to work through that. And, you know, I would venture to say, we probably have more people in here, not because it's in the morning, but because there's more fireworks, so people come to see the fireworks.
I agree, I should too. All right. Did you want to put a motion?
I did put a motion.
All right, we got a motion, and state your motion again, or you can read it back, whichever one.
Mr. Bryan, motion to go back to having two meetings per month, one in the morning and one in the evening.
All right. I have a second, her motion. Motion dies for lack of a second. Man, anyone else who can close this meeting? You, the last, you want? Sure. Sure you can. Come on up, come on, let's, uh...
It's been a while since I've been here, Mr. Commissioner, I shall appreciate you.
Thank you, sir, we've been trying to move.
I wasn't gonna say anything on this gentleman's issue.
Wait a minute, go ahead, just for the record, we all know it'll be for the third time.
Thomas M. Bush, 105 Chapel Lane, beautiful street, I love my address.
All right, you got three minutes, go ahead, sir.
I wasn't gonna say anything on this gentleman's issue with the meeting, but I did pick up my telephone, and I did find out when the meeting was, and you can pick up your phone and call, and I probably spoke to this nice lady, and she told me it was this morning, and that's why I'm here.
I'm glad you're here.
The reason I'm here is I wanted to thank you, Mr. Chairman, because I haven't been able to be here in a long time, and I'm not perfect, and you're not perfect, but I do think you run a good meeting. And number two, y'all voted on the RV ordinance, that I believe someone voted against this, but y'all voted for that we could leave our RV lot. but y'all voted for that we could leave our RV lot to our children, and I wanted to thank you for that.
Go ahead.
Wanted to thank you for that, because we should be able to leave our property, as some people say, you ought to be able to use the property the way you want to. Well, sometimes I speak with forked tongue. And I thank you that we can leave our property to our children. Now, if you don't have children, leave it to your niece, leave it to your nephew, your brother's children, that's fine. God bless America. And number three, so I want to thank y'all for that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
Number three, we moved to this county, one of the main reasons was for the parks. I love Beacon Hill, I also love Cape Salinas. I heard something about trees being cut down, so I just had a form of an opinion. I took my lovely wife, we go out there all the time. She can't walk as good as I can, so we do have one of those driving things, so I can take her out on the beach, and she doesn't have to walk as far, and it works really well. Whoever cut the trees, they did a marvelous job. Though whatever trees they cut, they probably could have cut a few more, and under my direction, there's a few more I'd like to go out there and point out that they could cut down. And now, when you drive in there, you can see the palm trees. And so I just, I wanted to thank you for having the foresight on the RV thing, where we can leave our property to the children. I hadn't even had a chance to be here in a while, and I appreciate you cleaning up Cape Salinas, and maybe one day, it could be a little miniature RV park or something like that. But I know a lot about RVs, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Commissioner Barnes, I'm going to recognize you here.
Okay, I just want to say something for informational purposes. Dr. Pat, Mr. Butler, myself, I think it was three weeks ago, we went to Tallahassee, met with Halsey, Bashir's, and also the Secretary of DOT, trying with our hats in our hands, trying to get some more help. Also talked to them about a project that's been looked into, islands are something that work the water out to keep down the erosion on the beach, which is very bad, and I think they were very receptive. We hoping that we get some money or some help. Butler may have heard something, I don't know if he...
Come on.
I just want the people to know that at least we trying, and I do appreciate Dr. Hartman, she did a good job presenting it to the Secretary. I think he had possibly four or five people with him, he didn't fall on death ears.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner, for your services. All right. Anyone else entertain a motion? Move. Motion second. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, people, for coming out today.